That's me. I just fixed it. Well, you haven't changed that much. It's frozen, too.
Is it a low flight or a regular?
I'll slip it in my husband's bag for the trip.
Have you noticed how many more is even in the street because now the nets ripped open again?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome back to City Council Half Live. Give me just a second. We're trying out our new technology, so it's not quite fixed. I'm, I do have the zoom on at my little work area here so I can see the staff and our council members who are remote. So make sure I can get that, make sure I can call on them if they want to make any comments. I don't need it. Okay, need just a second here. All right, I don't see council member. There he is. All right, okay, so we started here. Again, welcome, welcome back to City Council Hybrid. We have a couple of people here in the chambers live. Thanks for coming. And we have most of the council here and a couple others hybrid for various reasons. So we'll see how this works tonight. So audience who's on Zoom, if you have any comments about how the meeting is going, if you're having any trouble hearing, shoot a note to Todd Henderson, our meeting host, and he'll see what he can do to help. So bear with us a little bit tonight while we try out the new technology. So under Governor, oh, recording in progress, we're good. Under Governor Inslee's Washington Ready Plan, members of the public may attend Liberty Lake City Council meetings in person at City Hall at the address provided above or via Zoom at the link below. These are all on the agenda. Sorry about that. Members of the public will be allowed to comment in person or via Zoom as described on the last page of the agenda. Per Governor Inslee's Expanded Emergency Order, Proclamation 20-25, reinstituting a statewide mask mandate regardless of vaccination status. All those entering or remaining in City Hall must wear a mask or face covering. Masks are available for the public at City Hall. All right, so we will jump into our 6:00 PM workshop on Trailhead. I'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember Foliar. Councilmember Cargill.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Here.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kennedy.
Present.
Baird, here. And Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Kind of loud in here. So if we jump now and then it's because the speakers are pretty loud, just a quick heads up. All right, so we'll go ahead and jump in. We have the, this workshop is a continuation of our Trailhead discussions. And Lisa Key are Plating and Engineering Services Director will probably lead us off and introduce the team. And we'll plunge into Trailhead.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm going to let Jonathan Miller, our project manager with OAC, kick it off. But we have a number of team members with us today. We've got Scott McLaughlin with Bowton Construction, Steve Roth with Architects West, Keith Dixon also with Architects West. I'm trying to look around and see who else, of course, Chris Johnston and Kyle Dixon all part of the team. Am I missing anybody? I can't see everybody on the screen. So, but I'm going to turn over the presentation to Jonathan to kick us off.
Thanks, Lisa. All right. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having us here tonight. In front of you, you'll see the agenda. We'll go over a short little schedule update. Architects West will update you on the space plan. Scott McLaughlin will update you on the trajectory study and costs. And Kyle will close us out with financing and revenue. If you'd go to the next slide, please. So the schedule you see in front of you, this is a refresher of the initial schedule that we presented. On, if you recall, on January 18th, that was our first presentation to City Council. I'd like to point your attention to the yellow bar down in the lower right corner, which is the permitting and final review. The reason I want to highlight that is while this was admittedly an aggressive schedule from the start, it's that yellow bar we were really trying to hit because that's when we would be out to the streets, when our bid packages would be out to the subcontracting market. That timing in that early spring is a great time to bid projects historically. We wanted to get the biggest bang for the buck. And by doing that, generating as much competition as possible is how we do that. So that was our timeframe. If we could go to the next slide, I would just like to show where we're at now. So here you see with the, the red rectangles, this has been the last month while we've been working diligently. We haven't made a lot of progress on the design as we've been going through primarily different options on the driving range, different options of how it could lay out and different pricing options. So we haven't been able to progress much when it comes to the design side. So what you see with the rest of the schedule, things are now starting to slide back. And that yellow bar, what we're doing, we're getting later into the spring, assuming everything starts moving quickly here. And Architects West can start designing, designing bidable documents. We're getting later and later into the spring. I've been checking with the local subcontracting community. They're anticipating a lot of other projects bidding this spring. So that means we're going to have competition when we're out there trying to get the best possible pricing. So it could mean, you know, the difference between getting five or six bids on a particular scope, we might be looking at maybe two or three. So, and the later we get, you know, their, their backlogs are going to start to fill up and we're just going to get less, less competition. So I just kind of wanted to highlight that here as things have, I don't want to say stalled, but haven't quite progressed the way we initially anticipated. And again, all of this, we had an aggressive schedule because we wanted to get the biggest bang for the buck for this project. We want to deliver quality project at a great price and great value to Liberty Lake and the taxpayers. Next slide, please. Steve, you want to take this one?
Yeah, hopefully everyone can hear me okay. So this is a repeat of a slide that we showed, I think, a few weeks ago at this point relative to where we are in the design process. We're here at the red rectangle, which is where we've been for a little while, working on confirmation of the budget and the scope. So once we have confirmation on those things, we can move on through the rest of the process to the last box on the, at the bottom right of the sheet, which was, is the same as the yellow bar on the schedule that Jonathan was pointing out where we can get construction bids and a building permit and start to actually build this thing. So we can get there. We just need to get past this red rectangle. So if you go to the next slide, please. This is also a repeat of a previous slide from previous meetings, but I think it's a good reminder about what's important in the project. The blue boxes are items that are, you know, I would say must haves in a lot of ways for the, to be shared between golfers and the community. The green items are for just a fundamental functioning golf course. And then adequate parking down there, of course, serves, serves everyone and is necessary evil, you might say, for the project. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So this is the building program and space plan, not, not a floor plan yet, but just a representation of square footages and spaces. And this has been updated based on comments that were received at the last council meeting. So this is the current status of the building that is desired to be built by the city of Liberty Lake. So we have a combination of, I guess we'll start with the parking lot, 118 cars, you can see there, 25 driving range Ts, which is an increase over what we have existing. And then the building is a combination of new structure and existing structure. So we are reusing the lower level of the existing building. So starting there with the cart barn, so about 3,000 square feet of cart barn in the lower level and associated mechanical, electrical and other support spaces. On top of that, we've got roughly 3,500 square feet of outdoor space that's associated with the restaurant and the flex space. So that brings us to the new portion of the building that sits partially on top of the existing foundation and partially on new ground. So 3,000 square feet of restaurant, 2,020 feet of flex space, and then a 2,400 square foot pro shop. So all in all, we've got 7,420 square feet of new construction. We've got 3,500 square feet of exterior gathering space. And then we have 3,000 square feet in the basement that's reused as a cart barn. So, and then the, the association with the first T and the ninth green that are important for the pro shop that you can see there. So this is the basis for what would be the, the design of the building following confirmation of scope and budget. If we could move to the next slide. I think Keith Dixon has been working with Dave Tanner of Tanner Consulting. And Keith, it might be appropriate at this point for you to describe what, what we have here in the trajectory study.
Okay, thanks, Steve. So the trajectory study is, is what Dave Tanner from Tanner Consulting was hired to provide the city. And he was hired through the city to look at the new design layout. And I'm not sure if you can go to that. I think it's the next slide, just for the overall look at it. So what, what that trajectory study is doing is it's, it's taking this layout, which we call kind of the new layout. And he puts his numbers together to come up with the prior slide. In the aerial behind the layout, you can see the existing driving range, its configuration there. And I was just doing a poll count here just a little bit ago. So the new layout has about 30 polls and the old layout, which is currently existing is about 40, 40 different polls. And the entire goal of this new layout was to try and reduce the number of polls and come up with the most economical and efficient layout for the driving range. And when I talked to Dave this morning, he indicated that this current layout is excellent. It's as good as it can get for the property that we have available to us. It's shorter than the existing, but it's also more compact and more efficient from a driving range standpoint. But if you could go back up one slide to the section cut. With all that said, they, on the sections for the, the profiles, there you go, trajectories. So what you're seeing here in the darker gray, without zooming into it, it's very difficult to see. But basically this is a ball trajectory study indicating the flight of the balls using various hitting methods, type, different types of clubs. So it's, what he is doing is really looking at, say, the red dashed line that's closest to the T. That, that ball you can see goes up and then it comes down really quickly. So that's, that's an iron of some sort that he would be using there. The lower, flatter, longer arcs would be reflecting the trajectory of a, a driving club. And so, so what he's doing is he's looking over the entire facility, the different types of clubs that would be utilized, what the performance of the ball is. And he's looking at this also from a worst case scenario. Say a, a really strong golfer who can hit long and deep and with a certain type of club and a certain type of ball, these are not low flight balls. These are the actual, the, the actual balls that you would use during, you know, any sort of golf event. So I just want to make that clear. So the trajectories that you're seeing here reflect just a standard ball. Trying to think if there's anything else here. The, this particular layout, I think the tallest poles that we're indicating here are about 100, 144 feet tall. Just to give you a sense of the scale, it's, it's three times what the poles at the existing driving range are on the left side.
And it might be appropriate to point out that Dave Tanner's study represents, this study represents a 100% catch rate. So this is the, I guess, absolute worst case scenario and netting designed to prevent, you know, for all intensive purposes, 100% of golf balls from leaving the driving range.
That is, that is correct, Steve. Thank you. Let's see, if we bounce down another slide. Should be able to. There you go. Was there one more, Steve?
Yeah, one, one more slide.
Okay. And this kind of gives you a sense of the, of the scale there, the Ts being on the left side. And the, the way the fencing is configured here as it climbs from the low side to the west. And as we move to the east, it climbs up to its full height, remains even all the way across the top and drops back down on the, the north side there. So that is what it would look like. What we don't have is a little, is a person in there to give it some sense of scale, but it is very large. There's no doubt about it. But it is what is required in order to contain 100% of the balls.
And if we could back up one slide real quick, please. So the layout that we're showing here, the green bar where the 25 Ts are, that's curved in an arc based on Dave Tanner's recommendation for the optimum arrangement of driving range Ts in order to minimize the amount of netting and the height of netting that's needed. So that, that positioning of Ts is specifically intended to minimize the cost of netting. And that's, that's why it's shaped like that and why it's located where it is.
Correct. That's all I got, Steve.
Okay, in that case, let's keep moving. If you could go forward two slides. We've got some cost study information and Scott McLaughlin with Bowton. This is your slide.
Okay, thank you, Steve. So I wanted to start with kind of maybe taking a step back, staying on this slide. However, speaking to some of the existing conditions that are on the site. So on February 3rd, myself and Judge Netting, who is a supplier of poles and nettings throughout the Western United States, took a site visit and walked the sites and looked at the existing condition of the poles that are currently there. The summary of that was placed into some meeting minutes and forwarded on to Liberty Lake. But I wanted to highlight a couple of things. From a height perspective, the existing poles are, if we look at the top of the page, I'm calling that north, the north poles are roughly 50 feet. The east poles, which would be down range on the right side, those are in the range of 26 feet tall. And then if we looked at this bottom part of the page, those are 21 feet tall. The conditions that were determined from Judge Netting were that the 50-foot poles were in reasonably good condition and for the, for the age of those poles. The poles that are on the east and the south side, we did determine they had tags that those were 1998 for, from an install or a fabrication of those poles. Neither of those poles were in great condition or those locations. So he did experience some dry rot in several different poles. However, they all were standing. There was some concern that if they were to be just purely re-netted, that the east and the south poles could experience some wind damage with, you know, future wind events that occur throughout Liberty Lake. So that was kind of the summary of walking through and seeing what those conditions were. From that, we had engaged Dave Tanner, as was previously described, to put together a study to create the, the ideal design to minimize the risk to Liberty Lake. And that was what was previously shown. At the last meeting, we also heard and we wanted to engage, leaving the range as it is. So in further discussions with Dave Tanner, we used a trajectory study that he had previously completed from 2017, which is on the right side is the second option. That is considering a single story existing driving range with no changes being made to the current layout. The changes that would be made are all new poles and netting in order to create the best design to minimize the risk to, to the city of Liberty Lake. But with that, that allows us to compare a new design with new types to the previous design without making those changes. And with that, the other thing I wanted to highlight is neither of these designs or the design that is optimal is no longer a double decker scenario. So there would not be the ability to put a double decker on in the future. They would be a single story. In the new design, we would relocate a portion of the structure to the new layout and then we would add on to grab the additional necessary T-box areas. As it relates to the 2017 design of the existing, I haven't included anything for an upgrade to the structure or what's there existing. So it would be purely a swap out of the poles and netting in order to minimize the risk. Another note that Keith highlighted previously when comparing these two options, there's currently 30 new poles located for the new design, but there would be roughly 40 poles required given the, the T-box arrangement and, and the hitting style. So with all of those being said, and this is really hard for you guys to see, so I apologize on here. But if we took the original pricing that we were talking about two weeks ago of roughly $3.8 million for netting scope, the current design for the one on the left would be 3.6 million. So it's roughly $200,000 savings from what we had talked about previously. Keeping in mind that when we talked previously, we talked about maybe having a double decker. That's not in this scenario. So from a scope to scope perspective, we would be more in line with what our second option was, which was the tent, kind of as I'm tearing our way down. We had a $10 million kind of middle of the road option where we eliminated the future second floor or the cover or anything like that. This budget would actually be slightly higher than that previous budget of, we were 3.3 million, 3.35 million. And this is 3.6. So depending on the $12 million option, which was more, we are slightly under, but under a $10 million scenario where we scaled back the scope, we are actually slightly higher with validated numbers from our supplier and installer that are based upon a validated design provided by Dave Tanner. If I shift to the right side where we say, okay, well, we're going to leave everything alone, but we're just going to adjust the poles and the heights there. We're out, we are, we would be about $500,000 under if we're comparing that $3.8 million number that we were using for the $12 million threshold. Or if we wanted to align it more with the single story, we would still be, we would be right on budget. So 3.3 for 3.3. So that's just to give you kind of a perspective of where we sit today. Based upon Dave Tanner's recommendations, we are providing pricing with the, the, the best scenario for eliminating risk to Liberty Lake. From a height perspective, you are looking at the new design as Keith described. It basically tapers up from about 60 feet close to the T-box to at the far end of the range, down range, you would be 147 feet. If we look at the existing layout, you would start at about 60 as well. That's kind of universal. It would taper up to about 135 feet. So you're about 12 feet shorter, but you have more poles if we stay with the existing layout. Now, one option that was explored that I wanted to talk a little bit about is the ability to design for the future. So we did get some confirmation from Dave that on other facilities around the country of similar nature, they have installed 80 feet, 80-foot netting and poles. But they are designed to accept the extension necessary to, to go to the full height. So in this scenario, you would have, we would come in and put in an 80-foot pole that has a cap on the top of it. And at a later date, or as necessity would require, you could come in and put the additional varying in height up to 60 feet of additional length and additional netting onto that pole without having to change the foundations or the netting that's currently installed. So that would allow you to kind of stagger your approach as far as both from a risk perspective and from a financial perspective. That can be done in both scenarios. So if we, if that option was on the table, that was on the left-hand side with the new design, based upon the, a similar scope for scope, that would save you about $600,000, $650,000 to only install today the 80-foot pole height. Now, keep in mind, you are deferring the additional cost to a later date in the event that you would want to add the additional height. So it's not necessarily, it's a savings today, but at a later date, you would incur additional cost. If we looked at that same scenario for the existing layout, there would be larger savings there. We would be just under $1 million in savings by starting with an 80-foot height, planning for the future. And both of those are, as I said, numbers to be used against the $10 million threshold. If we were to use the $12 million threshold, there's slightly more because the scope is different. And, and it would be about $400,000 more in savings. So I'm rattling off a lot of numbers, I realize. But to go back to the new layout off the $12 million budget, you would save 1.1 million. And off of it, off of the existing layout, you would save 1.5 million dollars. So those are the values that are associated with the designs that we're currently showing you. I think that kind of covers where we, you know, one of the other conversations that was, that came out of our meeting last time was the, the necessity for parking. So we have done a little bit of research and we can create a design within the existing parking area. We would have to expand that slightly to the, to the west and then to the south to grab the 118 necessary parking spots that would be associated with our programming design that we're talking about. So in that sense, we can accommodate that parking within that footprint so that in the, in the scenario that you were to want to stay with the existing park, driving range layout, we would not have to put the parking over behind there or adjust that to accommodate those. The drawback would be that in the scenario of leaving it the way it is, there would be a limited ability to connect the parking from Trailhead over to City Hall. So that's, those are kind of a high level highlights for the, the current design options.
Okay, thanks, Scott. I think I, you know, we're going to have a time for questions at the end, but we just have three more slides to get through first. And Kyle Dixon, these are yours. If we could click to the next slide regarding financing and Kyle, whenever you're ready.
Thanks, Steve. Council, mayor. So these numbers were sent out last week as kind of a response to a couple of what-if scenarios. What if we had an extra million to put down to, to start and finance a lesser amount on the back end? So each one of these six different project budgets with a different amount down outlines what those annual payments look like and what that debt service looks like. And so, you know, if you look at the debt service, I had a question come in today regarding, you know, what is the true cost of that debt service? Does that debt service include the amount down? It does not. So when you're looking at the debt service, you're looking at, okay, let's say our project budget is 10 million. So at the middle left, we're going to put down 2 million. We're going to finance eight. So the cost of that eight million over 20 years is going to be 10.4. So, and you'll have, you'll see that annual payment of 520. And so I didn't want to spend too much time on this. We did send this out before, but this is obviously, you know, a, a good frame or a good reference for council as we kind of get through the process and identify the scope. But next slide, please. And so you guys have seen this spreadsheet before as well. And so I did tweak this a little bit based on a, a potential new scenario, high-end scenario. And, and so I'll focus your eye on the yellow highlight, the debt service on Trailhead. So that is kind of a high-end scenario. That's $12 million is $2 million down. We're financing 10 million. Our annual payment is going to be $645,000 based on current market rates. So once we get into these higher dollar amounts, you know, we were talking about ROI and how much of a benefit it would be to be able to, you know, put any additional revenue back into these annual payments. We're, we're getting into a scenario now where that's almost a requirement is that we need that ROI to augment these debt service payments on the higher end when we're, when we're talking about. When we're when we're talking about these funds coming from REIT and and the potential for for drawing those funds down. And when those funds get drawn down, obviously, you always have the potential for, since we're already committed to those, the potential for deferred maintenance on other projects. And so that's just obviously something to keep in mind as well, and we'll go back to this slide in a second, but if we go to the next slide real quick. To discuss a little bit of the ROI, so Chris put this together last week. And this was kind of based on some discussions, certainly the council member Kennedy had brought up regarding increasing fees, and so that these were things that Chris already kind of had identified for twenty twenty three. And I would have shown you the the rate sheet, but it is so small to really fit on here. And so this is just kind of a high level view of if we do nothing, here are the proposed rate increases and the additional revenue generated from those rate increases that can then be brought back into the golf operations fund for potential to offset these annual payments, and so this only reflects the rate increases, as you see on the left there, any potential for return on investment. Opportunities, you know, increased capacity at the driving range, the larger square footage at the pro shop, increase in restaurant lease. The simulators have the potential to be a really big piece of that and and obviously the event space, and so. So you'll see that one hundred and sixty six thousand dollars, if you go back one slide real quick, Todd. So just with the rate increases, that blue highlight just below debt service. Identifies how we can kind of, you know, offset these payments and help out the the real estate excise tax funds. Kind of going forward, and so that one sixty that you see there is kind of a direct reflection, and and obviously, we're gonna budget very conservatively on any of these ROI numbers. And so just, we could show just by the rate increases that we should be able to meet. You know, these certain thresholds and these certain benchmarks to continue to grow and to continue to help offset. The these higher dollar payments, but it's gonna be a necessity if we're if we're getting into these upper tier dollar amount, so. That's all that I had, if you want to go forward again, I believe that was everything. From from mine, there we go, okay, perfect.
Yeah, so that that really concludes, you know, our presentation, we have plenty of time, of course, for questions, the confirmation. Of scope and budget, whether it's eight or ten or twelve million. Is is critical for us to proceed, once we have that, we can proceed full speed with design, start to lock in pricing. And and create a great facility for you, but at this point, we would welcome questions.
All right, I'm gonna try to keep my eye on live and and remote, so Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, it would have been really nice if we could have got this before in our packet to give us some idea to be able to look at this and kind of formulate some questions. The first question I have is this. We went to low flight balls. For a reason. And I corrected pretty much the problem, so why is this whole scenario going back to regular golf balls and not low flight, can you answer that? That come from.
I can answer, Keith, do you want me to answer that or I can answer that?
I'm sure, yeah, I can take a run at that, just from from Dave's Dave Tanner's view and the way he needs to look at it from a liability standpoint, it is critical that he looks at worst case scenario, so he's, his opinion is that the low flight balls don't don't benefit to that level, they they may reduce your distance by ten percent. But they still have a significant impact. And one of the things he brought forward in our conversation, so the last day or so, is that people occasionally show up with their own balls and they'll hit those and those would be a standard ball, and so. He he had many, many examples of where people have not played by the rules, they've taken their own approach to how they want to do the driving range, whether it's bring their own balls, whether they target the top of that nets as close as they can. That their goal is to try and escape a ball, and so his his whole focus is to to look at that worst case scenario, so that is what you're seeing at this point, so he does not factor in the low flight balls.
Well, I would hope that we would have factored in the low flight balls to give a comparison for this council, be able to make a logical decision. Based on what we've been utilizing, because when we went to low flight balls, it seemed to correct the major problem right off the bat, the the balls were not going over the east side. They were going over the south side because of low, but it certainly corrected from going over to the left side. Now, my concern is, is looking at this, and it's always gonna be my concern. We're looking at eight percent, nine percent of the citizens being able to utilize this, and yet a hundred percent of them are paying for this. What I see, three million dollars or more for the driving range with the idea of ROI. I understand ROI, return on investment, but it also, when you look at that, you have to look at, will there ever be a time that we'll ever catch up to the debt? And no, there is not, there is not. What I do enjoy seeing is that Kyle's numbers to show that if we raise the bucket of balls, raise these costs and stuff. That would generate immediately a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars of revenue, that's exciting. That's exciting, I'm not gonna complain about years past, we haven't done that, because let's move forward, but that is a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars, I'm encouraged by. So based on that, I I'm really interested for the benefit of the citizens. That with the low flight balls, fifty foot poles or seventy, wherever they're going to be. It's projected that we have to replace thirty of those poles, if we're able to keep the fifty, excuse me, the seventeen poles on the north side, it'll reduce the debt. We certainly don't have to rebuild anything, but what it does for our driving range is immediately. And the city immediately give a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars towards debt. I'm concerned in the past where we've talked about eight point four, and then it went to ten and then twelve. To show it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to service that debt, and now what we're being shown is six hundred and some of that. And I understand the psychology of this, because if we show individuals the Cadillac version. People will look at that and say, you know, I'd love to have that, but I can't afford it, so I'll drop down to the ten. So I'm really concerned of where we're going with this, and I see tonight, budget scope confirmation. You know, a lot of information comes to the council, but I don't see where the council still is to a point where we can make a decision on whether the dollar amount is going to be and move forward. One of those questions that's not been discussed to get into is it, it's come up from council members in the past and also citizens. How can we take a seven thousand or nine thousand square foot building and give thirty five hundred square feet to the storage of golf carts? When no golf range in the area does that. That's a huge dollar amount, that I think that square footage could be dedicated to something else and therefore give the citizens a better option of what they're paying for, certainly not to store golf carts to take close to fifty percent of the square footage. Thank you.
Okay, we've got, I've got council member Cargill, then Baird, and then Kurtz.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the presentation, gentlemen, Kyle. I just want to go back to this financing issue, because as we all know, the the eight point four was the original target. But I think it's important for citizens to know that there is no scenario. No scenario, even the the, even the best case, there is no scenario where this costs just eight point four million to the city of Liberty Lake, is that accurate?
So it it depends on, it depends on how you define that, so in your terms, you're correct. So i- if you're looking to finance, anytime you take out, you know, financing, you're committing future funds. To, you know, a principal amount for that and obviously interest as well. And so, you know, when we're developing a project scope and budget, it is with the idea, how much is it going to take to get to deliver the project today? To the city.
Right. Yeah, thank you, and so that, so the eight point four cost, let's just say that for the sake of argument. We put two million down and financed six point four, the total cost of the finance is not going to be six point four if we do it for fifteen years, it's not gonna be six point four if we do it for twenty, it's not gonna be six point four if we do it for thirty, obviously, because of the interest costs and fees and all. All the other things that that go along, but the reason why I point that out is because we've been talking a lot about eight point four, eight point four, eight point four. That's not what the cost to the city is gonna be, under, as I mentioned earlier, the 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 only one that gets close to that is going to be nine point six, and that's if we put three down and finance the five point four. If we get up into these upper numbers here, the total cost of the city could end up being sixteen, close to sixteen point four million dollars. Depending on how much we put down, so. I'm really concerned about that, the other thing is that, let's just say for the sake of argument, we did a sixteen million dollar over the scope of the whole project, a sixteen million dollar plan. Right now, that's about fifteen hundred dollars per citizen in the city of Liberty Lake. And I cannot go out to citizens and neighbors and say, hey, I want you to pay fifteen hundred dollars to fund this project. Even if we do ten million, that's still nine hundred bucks per citizen. In the city of Liberty Lake, and as council member Kennedy pointed out, not everybody is going to use this facility. Will it be available to everybody? Absolutely, but not everyone will use it, so. I have big concerns about this, no matter what direction we're going in, just because to me, the numbers don't make a heck of a lot of sense. Thank you.
All right, next we have council member Barrett.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do have three questions, so if you need to move on and then I can come back if that is better, but. My first question is, in the document we were sent about Clear Risk and their response to our inquiry, the letter said that we would receive a response within in forty five days for them to revisit. What was the outcome after the forty five days, I I still don't have that document or their assessment when they revisited.
There was, to answer your quest question, council member Barrett. There was no written response, they said that they would evaluate it, the city came back with a a a plan to use low trajectory balls while we or or low, the the low, the low flight balls while we evaluated the trajectory and and identified a plan to address the issue. And they were fine with our using those low flight balls while we were while we were in process for addressing the issues. One, one thing that I would say is that we did, and keep in mind, and I have to apologize. Council member Kennedy, because we're providing you with the information in real time as we're got, as we're getting it, we just got the trajectory study this morning. We talked to Clear Risk this afternoon. And my suggestion to you is any questions related to that piece of it? Or what what needs to be done related to that? We should bring Blair Cock with Clear Risk back. I would recommend that it be that any discussion related to to risk assessment should be done in an executive session and I is if Sean's on the phone, I did have that conversation with him and he agrees that 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 would be the case. We have talked to Blair, he is available next Tuesday, and he would likely be available for your next regular meeting as well, if you didn't want to schedule a special meeting. But he in fact had to look at the information that we just got today. Before he was ready to respond to that.
Thank you.
Okay, let me go around this, all right, next we have council member Kurtz.
Hey, so Madam Mayor, I I have, myself have three questions as well, so I'll ask the first one, I think that's kind of related to the second one and then move forward, but. So I think my first question, I think I just want to confirm what I heard that in either scenario that's put forward, whether we leave the driving range as it is and update or where we move it to the proposed design, I thought I heard that there's no option to build a second deck, is that, is that accurate, or did I hear that wrong?
That is correct.
Okay, so that led me to the second question, which was, you talked about adjustable poles. What purpose, what reason would we ever have to have adjustable poles if we? Why would we need those if we're only having one deck? And assuming that that, you know, the the tees as they are on the ground would be sufficient with the eighty foot poles, why would we ever want the larger ones?
That's a, that's a risk perspective for you, so I would, I would, I would reach out to Clear Risk and have them give you the feedback on why, why you would ever want to go eighty versus why you would ever want to go a hundred and forty.
Okay.
It's a risk proposition.
Thank you.
Okay, so just make sure everybody has equal time here, we haven't heard anything from council member Foleer. Van Orman or Don, do either, any three of you have anything you want to weigh in on before we go back for a second, council member Van Orman.
I don't talk much, here it goes. I am really uncomfortable with spending over what we currently have in our budget. I'll just be real honest. I already know what our actual budget is. And actual budget basically was we had twelve million, three hundred and eighty, five hundred and forty. But we received much more. Same thing goes for what we spent versus what we had budgeted. Folks, we have six million. Granted, you need a little bit of that inside of the general sun to maneuver. But I'm not willing to spend eight point four million dollars on a project that is going to take care of nine percent of the population. So either we can scale this down or I'm kind of gonna be sitting out. Thanks.
Okay, so we got council member Foleer.
Great, thank you, Mayor, everybody hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. So I just want to talk about the driving range to start, first of all, I still have yet to hear why the height of our netting at fifty foot is not sufficient. I get we need to replace the netting, that's a given, we've talked about that for a long time. I get that we need to replace a portion of the poles, in my mind, not all of them. The far end and the golf course side, which is referring to is the east west side, sorry, I say.
East and south.
Okay, the golf course side. Which at my count is thirty poles. Again, I still have to hear why we need some netting that's taller than fifty feet. I I understand there's a, there's a there's a safety element to the discussion, I'm fully aware of that, but we've been operating with fifty foot netting for quite some time. So in my mind. Maybe that part of it's not, in my mind, I don't see that we need to move the driving range at all. And so let me throw a few numbers out if I may. So based on the last slide I received from the last meeting, we were given an estimate of total yearly revenue of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, right? So I, along with most everybody else, had sticker shock on the price of this driving range. And at three point six million dollars at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, it's gonna take twenty years to pay that off. I'm not down for that. At two point five million and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, and this is with twenty five driving stations, based on the slide we were given last, last meeting. It's fourteen years to pay that off. And I, I think if we replaced the thirty poles with fifty foot netting, replace the netting, you can do it for a million and quarter million and a half. It's a seven year bail, then don't move it. We're, we're basing our revenue income on twenty five driving spots as it is. So I'm good with that, it's making money, obviously, and it would only take seven years to pay that off. So if I, if I do it like this, instead of how much are we gonna, let's, how much are we going to spend, let's work it backwards. Let's just say of the eight point four million that we've all agreed to spend on this project. That based on previous slides, the site work is one point six, right? The, if we can do the range for one and a quarter, one and a half million. And the soft cost is two and a half million, that leaves us three million dollars of our eight point four. And based on the square footage pricing that I've seen from our last slide. Most expensive part of any building that is being proposed is four hundred dollars a square foot. the most expensive part of, of any building that is being proposed is four hundred dollars a square foot. Now, the restaurant's less, and cart storage is less, but let's just use that as a high number. Can't go wrong with four hundred dollars a square foot. So that leaves me three million dollars, so we can build a seventy-five hundred square foot building and stay at the eight point four million. That's how I am. The, 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 how do I just say this? The, the fly in the ointment is the driving range. Everything else, I think, based on what I'm seeing, and we've been given so far, you can do the math on the square footage and decide what if we can only afford a seventy-five hundred square foot building, then let's say that. If we can only afford so much on the driving range, let's say that. Thank you.
Okay, um, got, given to give Councilmember Dunn an opportunity before I start around for a second round. Just be mindful of the time. It's ten till.
Can I ask them to stop sharing and see Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, um, yeah, Todd, can you change it so we can see council members who are speaking? There you go.
Sure. Hey, um, uh, very grateful for the presentation and specifically the adat- adaptation. Uh, the design team definitely has taken the input of the council and the discussion, and the changes that I see, I, I think are reflecting that. Um, I'm gonna share perhaps, uh, Councilmember Follier's perceptions of the driving range as the biggest objective challenge in the design. And I want to try and represent my understanding of risk and how that risk, uh, needs to be considered by the, the group. Um, the risk, um, Clear Risk, our operator, has brought to our attention a significant problem. We, for, uh, in twenty seventeen, we responded with, um, we're going to adopt low-flight balls, and we're going to, um, have a project to improve this site. Um, my interpretation at that time was that, that those two things together allowed us to continue. Uh, this project or the actions of the Gulf Course Driving Range right now are the extension of that, which I think would allow us to continue to operate. I think that if we didn't take any action on the fence conditions, we would not be able to operate. So some condition, some changes needed. Um, is the needed, uh, height of the net, the one hundred and forty-seven, I'd call it one hundred percent capture rate height. Um, that's a, a risk consideration that we can take as a council to consider. Um, I particularly appreciate the gesture of recognizing, I call it, I think it was referred to as a phased approach, considering, for example, an eighty-foot initial presented height with the ability to extend to a height, um, at a later time to address, uh, ex- extended risk. So, I don't know, I heard Phil say fifty, for example, eighty is originally also suggested, but that there may be a condition of a height which would allow us to operate at a level of risk that we, as a city, feel comfortable with. I think that we is what could get us to, uh, the target price, uh, that Councilmember Follier has suggested. Thanks.
Councilmember Dunn. All right, so, uh, mindful of the time, it's about nine till. We've got about four minutes, and then we'll take a break. And I had, um, Councilmember Barrett first, then Kurtz, and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. And I will echo much of what Councilmember Follier and Dunn have said about the range. Um, the thing about risk is how much are we comfortable listening to, right? And for five years, the low fi- low-flight balls, um, have bought us time for five years. So I can't justify spending forty percent of the budget to address a concern that doesn't seem to be that pressing over five years. What I would be more interested in seeing is focusing our budget for this project on an actual rebuild, right? And I think that a lot of members have echoed that. What I would love to see is if we need a hundred and forty-seven foot poles, which sounds monstrous, but if we need those, let's budget for them at a later date. Because when I'm reading, um, the memo from, uh, the bouton team, the worst conditions on the right side, where we have some poles with dry rot. But when I look at the rear side, which it said new netting on these poles would last multiple years without breaking, and on the left side, that these poles could be pulled, reset, uh, we just got to shore up some footing. Um, they can handle many more years of netting. That does not convince me that this is a, we must do this right now with the trailhead renovation. So thank you.
Thank you. We've got two more minutes, and we'll take a break. Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, so I'm letting, I'm just kind of, all the numbers that you guys have thrown out, um, kind of doing your own research, um, Councilmember Cargill, um, Councilmember Follier, and definitely the design team. It's a lot to think about. And I guess with that in mind, um, I heard at the beginning of the presentation that we need to make a decision. And I'm wondering what our next step is and what the timeline is for that, because I, um, I hear some hesitation in moving forward, um, with doing things. Um, I don't want to waste any more time of the professional team that's working with us if we're not going forward in some way. Um, but I, I understand that we do need to do something. The timing is a little vague. Um, so I guess I'm, what sort of, uh, special meeting do we need to have soon? Um, in order to move forward with this? That's my question. And I'm sorry that we only have like a minute left.
Okay, we'll go ahead and let, uh, Lisa answer, and then when we come back to our follow-up workshop, Mayor Pro Tem, you'll be first.
So my recommendation to City Council is that we schedule a special workshop next Tuesday. I'd really like you to be able to have a conversation with Clear Risk. And that, that, so that you can make an informed decision. Um, that would be my recommendation.
We can, um, follow up on that then at the, the follow-on, um, during our workshop session, uh, if that's okay with everybody. So we'll go ahead and take a quick five-minute recess. Um, we will be back to start our regular City Council meeting at seven o'clock.
Wait, 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 stop. Yeah, let's stop.
Intent.
It was nice to see the inter, interchange with our public and us.
Yeah. All right, we've got just under a minute. We'll let everybody get settled here. Give our public a few more seconds to log in if they're going to join us. I will remind everybody. Make sure your microphone is close. Make sure you sit up close to it. And love it, hate it, disagree with it or not. We need to make sure we have our masks on if we're in chambers. And hopefully, there'll be an update to that soon, but we are requiring our visitors to have them, so I would hope the council would, um, respect that as well.
Go around record.
Under, understood? Just, all right, okay, seven o'clock. All right, so everybody, welcome to our first truly hybrid, uh, council meeting, um, in a little over two years, everybody. So today's Tuesday, February fifteenth. Um, this meeting is being held remotely and in person at City Hall. We have four people with us, um, plus one of our officers, um, here in chambers. So thanks for coming, everybody. We appreciate that. Uh, under Governor Inslee's Washington-ready plan, members of the public may attend Liberty Lake City Council meetings in person at City Hall at the address provided above, or via Zoom at the link below. Members of the public will be allowed to comment in person or via Zoom as described on the last page of this agenda. Per Governor Inslee's expanded emergency order, proclamation twenty dash twenty-five, reinstituting a statewide mask mandate regardless of vaccination status, all those entering or remaining in City Hall must wear a mask or face covering. Masks are available for the public at City Hall. All right, so we will start off with Councilmember Barrett doing the invocation, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Father, thank you so much for this day and the opportunity to gather to do the business of the city of Liberty Lake. Father, I ask that you give us wisdom and discernment, and that we may exercise good judgment in, uh, representing the citizens of Liberty Lake. We ask these things in your name.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of our Lord, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll bring our, our meeting to order. And I will do a quick roll call. I'm sure we are on. And members of the public who are dialing in, if you are having any trouble hearing any of us, um, please send a note to Todd Henderson, our meeting, meeting host, and he will let us know. We'll make the appropriate adjustments. Okay, Councilmember Follier.
Here.
Councilmember Cargill.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Here.
Councilmember Van Orman, here. Mayor Pro Tem Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Baird.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Great. All present and accounted for, and welcome again to those who have joined us in council chambers. We encourage everybody to do the same. Okay, so we are to agenda approval. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. I, I, agenda approval, uh, before, I recommend there would be one change moving forward, and that would be on B eleven. We had notification from Mrs. Lutzemberger that she has removed her application for trustees.
So we have a motion to, um, to remove action item B two from the agenda. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Baird. Any discussion? All right, I will just, I will say I talked to, um, Mrs. Lutzemberger. She's a hugely valued member of this community, and um, she has some personal things come up, and hopefully we will see her back soon. Um, all right, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, ayes have it, seven zero.
Very good. And moving forward on a motion, uh, for the council consideration, any additions or subtractions they would like to see? Seeing that I make a motion that we approve the adjusted agenda.
Second.
Thank you. We have a second by Councilmember Dunn. Any questions, discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ayes have it, seven zero, motion passes. Okay, so we are up to citizen comments. So yay, again, we have people back in chambers, so I'm going to go through, um, a rundown of the, uh, the citizen comment period. Just a reminder that this truly is a citizen comment period. Um, it is not intended for a discussion back and forth. We are here to listen. If there are questions that need to be answered, we will make sure we have your contact information and get back to you with the answer. For those here in the chambers, we do have these handy-dandy little yellow sheets. I already have a couple of them. So if you're in chambers and want to make citizen comment, please fill out the yellow sheet. If you are joining us remotely, and you want to make a comment, go ahead and send a note to Todd Henderson, our meeting host, once again. And, um, let him know that you want to speak, and he will get word to me, and we will call on you. Um, we also do have written comments that come in, and Kelsey Hardy, our city clerk, will make note of those after we have the in-person comments. So with no further ado, uh, we will go ahead and start with our in-person, uh, requests. So first, we have Jim Bomker, city resident, and, um, he wants to speak on item nine A. So if you'd like to join us at the podium, and while he's getting up here, just, um, wanted to remember, note to everybody, you have a three-minute time limit, um, and so that will be showing on the screen.
And happy golf. I need to add that, because we're talking about the trailhead, uh, capital projects.
Jim, could you move and see if you can move the mic closer?
Okay, is that better?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, um, I've reviewed, uh, all of the, uh, trailhead capital, uh, project information that's on the city website. I've got a couple of observations, and the first one would be, uh, according to that Staples report, seems like very few Liberty Lake citizens actually get any benefit from Trailhead. So it, it's kind of perplexing to me, given that, why the city's considering spending between eight and twelve million dollars on this, uh, project? That would be the, uh, kind of the first thing. Uh, now that, I looked at the January twenty-fifth, uh, project update, and I think it includes, uh, many, uh, questionable items, such as, why would the city build and own a restaurant? Why would the city build and own a, a pro shop? But, uh, in the interest of time, I really want to focus on the driving range. So the, uh, the January twenty-fifth update contemplates spending between, I don't know, three point three million and three point nine million, uh, for the, uh, driving range. And, uh, you know, this is an astounding amount of money. But I think, for me, even more concerning is that, uh, driving range consumes somewhere around six and a half acres what I consider to be, uh, prime green space in the heart of the city. And is this the best way to use that land? You know, many golf courses, uh, they don't have driving ranges. They have like a, like a batting cage or the equivalent of a batting cage. And, uh, you know, there's already two driving ranges within the, uh, city limits. So do we really need to have another one? And then, you know, just kind of imagine the amenities that would be open for consideration by eliminating the, uh, ugly poles and the netting that surround that driving range. You know, that acreage could be used for a lot of other things. It could be miniature golf. It could be pickleball. It could be a skating ribbon.
And note the time.
Okay, so therefore, I ask City Council to, uh, further reflect on how the Trailhead project can be structured so that it benefits the largest number of citizens of Liberty Lake. And I know the project's been festering for years.
Okay.
But the City Council should push back on any deadline, a project magnitude of this.
Need to stop you, Jim. Sorry. Thank you for coming and commenting. All, we always love it when people come. All right, next up, we have Mark Saba, city resident and another Trailhead comment. Welcome, Mark Saba.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mark Saba. I am a resident of Liberty Lake, living one, two, two, one, North Melbourne. Um, Mr. Follier, your comment about the, uh, driving range, I love it. It's a great idea. It, it kind of takes it and brings everything into perspective. Jamie, your comment about delaying and maybe going further down the road to extend the driving range makes total sense also. What I would like to see is a chance to at least, let's put this thing to bed. Let's move forward. And I think with what this gentleman had brought forward today, makes total sense. Keeps it within, uh, budget. It gets the building what everyone wants. And it keeps the driving range at the way it is right now, at a reasonable cost. And, you know, I am an avid golfer. I do golf a lot. And Trailhead is one of my home courses, and I'd love to see it, you know, for, you know, keep going the way, you know, it's going today, but on a, on a better and higher, uh, opportunity. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, and next we have Tom Salberg, city resident, and I'm not quite sure what he's speaking on, so surprise us.
Says right on there.
I know, I wasn't going to share.
Neighbors, guest staff, and electeds, Tom Salberg, the Bree Lake River District. I'd just like to take a minute to reflect, and we all have. Two years ago, I had COVID at this time. Two years ago, we weren't having meetings. We, we didn't know it was COVID that I had. I did. Uh, COVID could have stopped us all in our tracks. It sure as hell knocked us down, but not out. I just want to say some thank yous to, uh, some groups of people for keeping us afloat during this time. First of all, to Liberty Lake Police Department for keeping us safe, serving and protecting with honor. I couldn't be more proud of my sisters and brothers and crew. Thank you so much to the staff who keep the city running, our roads clear, and myriad of other things every day. Jan, Lisa, Kyle, all of you who are working with and for them. Uh, you do amazing work. There's not enough of you. And you kept things moving, not just kept them moving. We were salt, we're more salt than any other small city, maybe some of the big cities. To the friends of the library for all that you do, to continue to make the library the heart of Liberty Lake, and for volunteering everywhere. I'm going to move that into the next thank you, which is to Mark Saba, and to the Winter Glow, uh, crew. Mark coordinated all of us volunteers. That's her and Kat. Uh, but the friends of the library and some of, some people from all around the area really helped make it be better this year, third year, and I think it'll be even better next year. I just want to thank all of our neighbors. The generosity of spirit that we've seen on some of the social media posts. Wendy, thank you so much for the Liberty Lake community and how much it does. Uh, we've been able to help each other instead of, well, there's some fighting. There's some anger. But we help each other, and we take care of each other, and we work together during some. This is a pandemic. And when history looks back at this, you can look back at this time in our lives, see how we came together. And then I want to thank all of you for your service. I know there's been a change. I love the work that you do.
I know there's been a change. I love the work that you do. I know each one of you individually and I appreciate you. Liberty Lake together is truly a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I do have a note here. It looks like Tim Olson is joining us by Zoom. Would like to make a comment. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hopefully you're happier with the technology. We're, we're making strides.
Thank you so much for addressing that. This is Tim Olson, a resident of Liberty Lake. I'm a golfer. I'm not a very good one and I'm in favor of an updated Trailhead course in our city. I just want to mention that 90% of human decisions are made based off emotions. Humans use logic to justify their actions to themselves and to others, and people generally think their decisions are made based on facts. We just heard that the trajectory study came in this morning. Clear risk answers came in this afternoon, and yet the City Council is getting pushed to make a decision. Ready-fire aim is not a responsible way for handling this project. I feel as though any council member that's going to spend the money of the citizens that do not have all the facts or not looking out for the interests of the citizens, and that's not why we elected. Yet tonight, after discussing the potential for keeping the parking lot where it is and expanding it, keeping the driving range where it is with some new poles, we still have no idea what's going to cost. We're still talking about an 8.4 million, 10 million, or 12 million dollar project. Is, as a citizen, I can't tell you how happy that I, we have some logical questions being asked. We're finally seeing some options to get what we want for this project. Yet this is the fourth or fifth workshop and presentation where council's been asked to make a decision. Yet the members of the City Council are finally getting some of the answers and not guesstims. Councilmember Kennedy, thank you for your logic and grounding decision points that you've been asking for a number of meetings now. It appears that you're finally getting them. This is called logical. Councilmember Foyer, I am so happy to hear your logic now and how to work this backwards. That's a decision also using logic. I'm hoping that with some of the questions that you've decided, that you've, that if you decide to have another special meeting next week, that you can actually see what that's going to cost to keep the parking lot where it is, to work with some of the other decisions that were being made and to kind of compromise here and try to come up with a nice facility for the residents of Liberty Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, is there anybody else either in person or on Zoom who would like to make a comment? Just remember you will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Kind of going once, going twice. All right, I think that is it for citizen comments this round. So we will go ahead and move to our next section of the agenda. We are up to.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
May I note the written comments that we received?
Thank you for the reminder, Kelsey. I appreciate it.
So we received written comments from five citizens. We received written comments from Ron Gray, a city resident regarding resolution 22-295. That's on the agenda this evening. We received written comment from Jed Spencer, also a city resident regarding Trailhead. We received comments from Jerry and Marsha Binder, also city residents regarding the state emergency powers reform and the local income tax ban. Also received comments from Christie Zapata, a city resident regarding the Trailhead project. And lastly, we received written comments from Jim Bomker, also a city resident regarding the state emergency powers reform. And I'll just note that all the written comments received were shared with the mayor and all of City Council in advance of the meeting also.
Great, thank you. Just a reminder to everybody, written comments are always welcome. It's preferable that we get them into the city clerk before, I believe the deadline is 4:00 PM, so she can get those out to the council in time for them, all of us to read that before the meeting. So thanks, Kelsey. Appreciate it. All right, announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. We have Spokane Transit Authority with us today to do a presentation, so I'll go ahead and turn that over, kind of make sure I move you guys up on my screen a little bit. All right.
Thank you, Mayor Kaminski. Can you hear me?
We can. Hi, Susan, welcome.
Am I shouting?
No, 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 I just couldn't see you on my screen. Now I can.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council for allowing us to come and talk to you tonight about one of the projects in the tenure plan, STA moving forward, called I-90 Valley High Performance Transit. My name is Susan Meyer and I'm the CEO. I'm going to turn this over in just a moment to Carl Otterstrom, who you all know has been our planning director for, he reminded me today, 13 years. I couldn't imagine it had been that long. But he's going to make the presentation. We have condensed this presentation tonight for the purpose of brevity. And we appreciate your input and your questions, but know that there is more time for us to review additional information with you at your convenience. I'd like to acknowledge the council's new appointment to the STA board, Councilmember Dunn. I'd like to acknowledge Mike Kennedy, Councilman Mike Kennedy, who has been on our board for a number of years. And welcome back, Councilmember Van Orman, who was a chair of the Spokane Transit Board. So thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Carl Otterstrom.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the City Council. We have just a presentation tonight. I believe I saw it flash on the screen if, if it could be brought up to be shared. Is that?
Well, we're getting it.
Great. So I'll just launch into this. Susan gave a brief introduction. Let's go to the third slide if you will. The I-90 Valley Corridor is one of the 25 or so projects in the STA moving forward plan. Actually, it's, it's a compilation of multiple projects in that corridor. The high-performance transit service itself, a new transit center, expanded commuter parking east of Sullivan Road, and then new direct service between Liberty Lake and Spokane, new night and weekend service on that high-performance transit line. And then a pilot project to extend service to Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene on the basis of a pilot partnership with Cootney County and those organizations there. This map that's shown, this is representative of the projects around the region. And so that blue line extending along I-90 with that dash line representing the express service that's complementary to the corridor and then those blue outlined circles in the Miraboo Tran, Miraboo Park and Ride, investing in transit center in that area and the new park and ride expansion capacity east of Sullivan, which is depicted as being in the Liberty Lake area. Next slide. And so this project, in addition to those major elements of, as described in the STA moving forward plan, also includes other high-performance transit stations and stops. And when we talk about high-performance transit, this is our terminology to represent an elevated investment enhancement to the service quality, the functionality of stations, the investment level, very similar to, in many cases, bus rapid transit and/or actually the application of bus rapid transit and some, some features that you might see in a light rail corridor. But really, those investments at major stations and stops, identifying and creating a structure of this service in the I-90 corridor, which I'll share more about today, a potential Argon Road, a flyer station and park and ride. And then as part of our overall vision of this, what facilities we might connect to in Cootney County. And then as we look at new facilities, new connections along I-90, what other routes and service changes are required to really make the best use of that and connect the most number of people. STA has secured both through the STA moving forward program and with grants, both secured and programmed 14 and almost 14 and a half million dollars for the I-90 Valley Corridor. And so this effort includes both the planning, design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, and construction of the new facilities, and then the deployment of new services. Next slide, please. This is just a rundown of our current phase of activity is the corridor development plan. And when we began this work in the summer of last year, we engaged a technical advisory committee and also engaged with one of our board committees at STA to develop objectives for the study to support economic vitality, advanced transportation equity by improving access to jobs, education, healthcare, recreation, healthy food, healthcare, and other facilities, promoting integrated solutions that support safety and health transportation, healthy transportation options, and engaging our community partners and agencies throughout the area, supporting as a model for community benefits, a regional and interstate cooperation. So both within Spokane County and then as we look to partners in Cootney County, and then advancing ultimately the service and infrastructure for high-performance transit that are cost-conscious, safe, high-performing, resilient, and reflect and enhance community identity and environment. Next slide, please. So the next few slides, we'll talk about the purpose of this. Why are we talking about the I-90 corridor? Well, it's an area of rapid growth in Spokane County. Liberty Lake is currently and is projected to be through 2040 the fastest-growing part of Spokane County in terms of the city and the rate of growth. We have, have other hotspots along the corridor, including on Sprague Avenue, Argon Road, including Spokane Valley and Millwood areas, the industrial park in Spokane Valley, also what's happening east of the industrial park off of Barker Road, the Bedawood Technology Campus, which, you know, is, is, continues to evolve and reach, transform itself and will likely see a new transformation of that space in the coming few years. And then Harvard Road and Country Vista, the growth particularly on the south side of I-90, but both sides. The city and the region is anticipating rapid growth. And then we, doesn't even mention what's happening in Cootney County where it's growing at an even faster rate. One of the fastest, Cootney, the metropolitan areas in the country right now. Next slide, please. And so growing and feeling it, the, the traffic on I-90 is increasing. There are hotspots you all know about, and, and they're not just kind of the typical, you know, west of, say, Sprague or Argon, but now it's, it's very much consistently congested east of Sullivan Road, especially Barker to Harvard interchanges. And then the different ramp terminals that are seeing congestion getting on the freeway each day. Also, there's increasing populations who commute across the state line. And in the last decade, the, the rate of growth has actually been, it's been growing faster as a percentage growth in people who are living in Spokane County but work in Cootney County. So that, there's a certainly a mutual interest in finding alternatives to that traffic congestion and supporting regional, the overall effective capacity of our transportation system. Next slide, please. So this corridor development plan, next slide, is like a lot of different planning processes where we have a lot of different ideas. We call building blocks, lane configuration, service types, service frequency, facilities that could exist. It started developing, and we, we worked to develop a number of scenarios that could be combined together and started funneling that down late, later in the fall after a technical advisory committee meeting with staff from the respective jurisdictions in the corridor on the Spokane County side and have worked to really come up with a preferred architecture that then has alternatives for some, some different connection points and whatnot that we are evaluating. And that will inform a draft quarter development plan, including, if you see that little icon there with the three people that represents an open house, which is coming up here shortly. I'll talk about more in a little bit. Next slide. This shows that same funnel. Go back one slide, please. Thank you. Oh, I think we went the other direction, actually. Go back two slides now. And one, there we perfect. This timeline, so those same colors are depicted from the last slide here. But this is showing across the months of the year from 2021 into this year. So we are in that February timeframe with an upcoming open house and evaluating a architecture with multiple permutations or alternatives from that, and that'll be all that, including the public input, will be informing the development of a draft quarter development plan, which we'll go through another round of public input before we begin implementation steps, which I'll refer to later. Next slide. So this scenario development process, the building blocks helped us develop multiple scenarios. We had about 14 different scenarios. We did some preliminary score and came to a shorter list of about four or five. And coupled that with land analysis, some real beginning work on understanding what's available, where those sites are relative to freeway interchanges, development patterns, and zoning opportunities, et cetera. To really, again, we're not just traveling on the freeway. We have to be connections across the regions of finding those connection points. And that has helped us come together to, to prepare a preferred scenario or preferred architecture that has three alternatives based on that that we are evaluating. Next slide, please. And so this preferred scenario is basically a compilation of routes that connect multiple destinations across the I-90 corridor. Now, our major focus for infrastructure investments is between Spokane and Liberty Lake. But this corridor really extends from the West Plains, the airport. Historically, has been viewed as the airport to Coeur d'Alene, but you'll see, we actually expanded that, expanded that just a little bit with recent developments in the West Plains. Trying to balance frequency of stops relative to the speed of vehicles and that, that balance means that not every route can really stop in every single location. Otherwise, it'll get bogged down by the the travel time and be less attractive to ride. So, so as a result, we're proposing that there is a complementary routes that make different connections in the corridor while still taking advantage of major facilities that connect to, to areas in Spokane Valley and elsewhere. So let me introduce the, kind of the buildup of this in the next slide, next few slides. Move on to the next, please. So this is a base map, just very just illustrating in simple terms the, the lay of the land with I-90, the jurisdictions in this corridor, and different existing transit connection facilities from the West Plains Transit Center through, through the downtown area, Valley Transit Center, Miraboo, and out to Liberty Lake. And the next slide will show then a highlights of yellow spots that are representing areas that we're really focusing our study on for new facilities. Now, those five areas, Argon, the Miraboo area, which we're really seeing between Pines and Sullivan, either side of the freeway, the Green Acres, which is really kind of Barker Road to the Green Acres exit, Liberty Lake, about a mile in each direction from the Liberty Lake Harvard Road exits, and then State Line, which is in the proximity of the State Line interchange to the State Line boundary. The next slide then kind of highlights the, these three in the center as really the main focus of new facilities in terms of our current budget and, and scope of work in STA moving forward. And it may be only two of these three locations. We plan to retain the Liberty Lake Park and Ride, but we're still looking at opportunities to expand in the Liberty Lake area and make new connections and services. And then let's add another layer here. Next slide there shows a, the first line on this, this, this three routes working together in Spokane County to make connections. This would be from the West Plains Transit Center, which today serves as a hub for a lot of jobs in the West Plains, including Amazon to the airport, to downtown Spokane, and then out to the valley connecting at Argon Road in the Miraboo area, and then continuing on the north side of the highway, the freeway to Liberty Lake. And, and the next slide, please, adds to this with a blue line connecting from the north bank of Spokane, so making connections with the county campus and job centers in that area with Kendall Yards, but also the major public facilities off of Boone and Howard. And then continued through downtown out to the Green Acres area and Liberty Lake. And with the idea on this route that it continues out Appleway past the city limits of Liberty Lake to State Line, and that allows us to probably extend service to the growing job activities in the eastern part of Liberty Lake, jobs and housing. Next slide. Adds another layer, which is a connection really complements this by connecting the central part of the valley along Sprague Avenue with the university district, which allows connections to the rest of the STA system with the city line, but also connects on the eastern edge in that Green Acres area. Now, these little school, little connection points that would be proposed, new locations, those are really still a part of the alternative evaluation process. And so looking at specific sites and how they could function is part of this effort. Next slide. This is showing then that dash line, that pilot service connecting into Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls and how that could be intertwined with these routes to make those interstate connections. Next slide, please. So our evaluation, we have many evaluation criteria. I'm not going to go into all the details here, but they look at ridership and access and qualitative impacts, the, the number of jobs and housing and the available accessible by transit. And all those things will help us in addition to the public feedback we'll be receiving over the next month or so to come up with that preferred alternative and a draft, a initial quarter development plan. We'll be sharing those results with members of the advisory committee. We'll be sharing those results with members of the advisory committee and the public later this spring. Next slide. So right now, you're the first. City Council we presented to, and we are scheduled to present through the month of February into early March. And then have our open house, so we'll also be promoting that through various channels and the media. STA's website and to our bus riders. And that will be on March second. And in a few slides, I'll share just how you can find more information on that. And we'll have an online survey that we open to the general public to gather feedback on that. And followed by additional meetings with our partner agencies, looking in more detail as as we get to. Site-specific questions or opportunities to to really. Refine those to to develop that draft quarter development plan. With another technical advisor committee meeting held in May with the goal of having a draft. Quarter development plan for the public's review in June. Next slide, please. So this is all part of the quarter to planning phase, which has multiple facets. And I think somehow they got erased from this slide, but there is multiple facets under that, kind of like the other phases here. But once this is done, in the summer, we'll begin design and engineering of. Major facilities and bus stop improvements in the corridor. With construction implementation occurring through twenty twenty five to to begin service at that time. And then I think my final slide or penultimate slide. Advance the slide, please. So we are having this virtual, this open house virtually on March second, it'll be five P M. And we'll be presenting and taking questions during that and then providing the survey opportunity. There's a link below that will send you to the project webpage and. Once you get closer to that date, the the link will be live to join the open house. And we also, as Susan Meyer. Mentioned, we're happy to meet with any members of the city council who would like. More one-on-one briefing on this. And we really appreciate partnerships we partnership we have with. Liberty Lake and the staff and the council, and we look forward to making these improvements for the community. Are there any questions?
Looking for hands, Councilmember Dunn.
So thank you, Carl, and thank you, Susan. I did actually have a chance to review this information with them, advance the meeting. I just want to reflect on my observations and reviewing it. With transit comes economic activity, and it's kind of exciting to see that our community is in focus right now for STA. For further development or improvements for transit. So I too am grateful for our partnership. And the economic impacts that that has in our community. So, thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Van Orman.
Let's see if I can get this up a little bit closer. Nice to see both of you again. I'd like to go ahead and and kind of put inside your minds for everybody. When we're looking at bus routes and rapid transit that we've talked about for all these years. Be nice if we start connecting our community, and I know that. Katie had been talking about doing a grant to connect her residents for doctors' visits, dentist's visits. Connecting our fifty-five and over and our workforce housing. We've got Trutina, Stone, Stone Ridge and Betterit that all need to be connected. And having a local bus route would be amazing. Can you help us get there? And again, thank you for bringing in our weekend and night services. I was. Thankful that we were able to do that during my term.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Van Orman. It's good to see you. And yeah, we are, one of the things. I didn't mention, just in quickly going through this, is we have also additional improvements this year coming online. With service starting on the south side of I ninety, connecting along Appleway and Country Vista. That'll connect the new high school to Liberty Lake and. Back to that route, one of the benefits of some of these. Regional connections is we will have segments of them, both that those red and purple, blue lines at the beginning, after purple and blue. Had local connections, both on the north side of I ninety, along Mission Avenue, and then along Appleway. And so one of those goals is is to. Take care of some of those local connections. With those regional routes with with local stops, but. May not feel all fulfill all the needs that have been addressed. I think one of the things we're also looking at is. Been explored elsewhere in the country is other types of services rather than a regular fixed route bus. Because some of those areas may not warrant the same level of service, given the density. As a regular scheduled bus route. So those are, those are still in in our list of things, and we have a strategic planning effort that's just getting started. To look at the next ten years, and some of those types of new services could be in that. That plan as a result.
Thank you, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, I will say we'll we'll work with staff and we'll get some of the information on our city's website and Facebook pages as well to get the message out about the open houses and. Surveys. And look forward to continuing updates, Councilmember Dunn. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to reports and inquiries. Do we have any city council reports? Councilmember Cargill, then Councilmember Dunn.
Well, thanks very much, Mayor. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One, I had the opportunity to listen in to the results of the city audit that was done by the state. State Auditor's Office, and it came back with flying colors, so just congratulations to everyone for that. They were. Basically, just over the moon about how great the job Liberty Lake is doing. No concerns of the city's processes, the audit. Cost was in line with original estimates. And they also said that Anne Marie and Kyle were great to work with, so wanted to make sure I put a put out a shout for them as well. One other thing I wanted to note is that we had another. As was put on the community page, we had another serious car crash at Mission and Country Vista over the weekend. The trees there are now in total, totally disrepair, and that's an intersection, I think. I know we've talked about before, but we're going to want to keep a close eye on in the future as well, because. If I remember, that's the third major accident that we've had there over the past year or so, so. I just wanted to to point that out. And then finally, as we mentioned before the meeting. I've been pleasantly surprised and pleased by the number of people who are not only showing up to now testify, but also. Provide us citizen comments via email and reach out to the city council members. So. That's a great thing. I hope we get more of it and hope people will be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Dunn and then Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, upon reflection, I'd like to apologize to Councilmember Cargill and to this group. For the adversarial and confrontational interaction I had in the power meeting. In order for this group to be successful at collective decision-making and directing, we need to have an environment of collaboration and cooperation. To that end, and in that spirit, I'd like to organize or try to organize a staff appreciation event like a luncheon. And I'd be grateful if Councilmember Cargill would consider collaborating with me on that. And I'll reach out to him after this meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to sit and spend quite a bit of time, actually individually with our. New council members over the last week and a half. Getting to know each other a little bit and kind of the. Just getting to know each other a little bit, and it was very nice. So I wanted to thank them for taking the time to sit and visit with me. Have coffee or breakfast or whatever, just kind of get to know each other. So thank you for that.
All right, any other council reports? All right. I guess it's my turn. All right, Mayor's report, and I do apologize to the council. I did not get my weekly mayor's report out today. It will be out tomorrow. Just a couple of things of note over the last couple of weeks. I mentioned I had the honor of being one of the judges. Along with Melanie Rose from Vista with for the Future Business Leaders of America Regional Competition, we judged the job interview section. We had a couple really, really great participants, and as a result, I am actually now volunteering for Ridgeline High School to be their job interview coach. So looking forward to that. And speaking of Ridgeline, they are having a career fair on the twenty-fifth. We have several members of the staff and myself who are going to. To attend that. And and then they're also having a career fair in a couple of months from there, so I will work with Heidi and Jen. See if that might benefit us for anybody we might be hiring over the summer. Lots of lots of legislative updates. I'm not going to go through the litany of alphabet soup of the organizations. That I've been attending the legislative updates for. The hot sheet will come out with my my mayor's report tomorrow. I did have the opportunity as well to attend a National League of Cities Federal Advocacy and Communication webinar. Very interactive, really great. Great advice on how to interact with our national representatives, how to get a hold of them, the best way to communicate, the best way to format. That communication. So if anybody would like any additional information on that, I'll be happy to share. They they provided a really nice template. To follow with regards to communication. The Mayor's Exchange was held in Olympia last week. It was a smaller group than ours, but we were back in person for the first time in several years. More legislative updates. We had a great report on the economic forecast, and as everybody expects. Inflation rates are expected to continue to be high in twenty twenty-two. But getting back to more of normal rates in twenty-three and twenty-four, their new forecast will be out. That we kind of got a preview, I believe it's sometime in the this week or next week. So if there's any big changes, I'll. Report on that. And they also talked about disaster recovery with regards to. FEMA and other resources out there, should we run into any natural disasters out here. Had a phone call with one of our our US representatives, talked about the growing concern over China. National privacy laws and rising prescription costs and what the discussions are going on with that, especially with for our. Our citizens on Medicare. I know there's a lot of challenges with with donut holes, so I hear in in rising costs. Councilmember Kurtz and I have had the pleasure of interviewing four of our Community Engagement Commission applicants. We have more to come with the hopes of getting all of those finished, hopefully by the end of the month. And we have also posted the job posting for our communication specialist. So anybody out there. Who's interested or knows anybody who might be interested in applying for that job, you can find that online. And last but not least, I met with Phil at the hub on Monday. I'm not going to steal his thunder, but there's some really exciting. Plans for potential expansion there, and he and I are working on a date for him to come in and give a short presentation to council on that. Lots of upcoming other events that I won't worry with those, I'll report on them when they're finished. Okay, city administrator report.
Thank you, councilmembers. Mayor, it's very nice to be here this evening. It's different. It's been two years, too long. So we'll kick off the report with Kyle, who. Thank you, Councilmember Cargill, for mentioning the audit. Kyle, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
He said it better than I was going to, so thank you, Councilmember Cargill. I just want to add a quick thanks. You know, these are, you know, these are time-consuming and stressful at times audits, and so I just want to thank staff. Lisa, Jen, Chief, everybody, Trevor, for for rounding up some of the information that that they're kind of. Shooting kind of from all angles. And so it truly is a team effort to to get everything that they're requesting. Kind of compiled in in one location and get that back to them. So I just want to say thanks to everybody for for making that process as easy as possible on us.
Thank you, Kyle. Lisa has an update on weight restrictions on a couple of our city streets. Lisa?
Yeah, um, Mayor, councilmembers, it is that time of year again when we're looking at seasonal weight restrictions on certain roadways. We have put weight restrictions on Kramer Parkway from Sprague Avenue to Country Vista. And from Mission Avenue between the Harvard Road. Roundabout and the Harvest Parkway Roundabout. What the good news is that. With projects that are going to be constructed this year, this will hopefully be the last time in a very long time. That we'll need to put seasonal road or weight restrictions on these two roads. That's all I have.
Any questions on that? Okay, moving on, David will provide an update on the signal at Legacy.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, Midland is working. Right now to get all their submittals in, there's ninety percent other submittals have been approved. Their pre-con is scheduled for the last week of February. The current start date right now is scheduled to be March seventh. Pending materials and weather, everything's actually moving forward so far pretty well. That's about it for me.
Alright, thank you. Thanks, David. Trevor, you want to provide hopefully one last update on the generator at PD and HVAC?
Yeah, so I know the HVAC project in City Hall is taking a little bit longer due to just getting. Parts and whatnot, but we are essentially done. All the new units are working. That includes the air purifiers, the DOA units, which are the fresh air units inside a city council. Really, right now, we're just waiting for to schedule the final walkthrough and inspection and sign off from there, so. Good to have that that project completed. The generator over at the police station. Staff met with the contractor that did the install for the startup and kind of the walkthrough. On the whole generator, and that is located on the backside of the library police station. It is fenced in and a locked, secured area. I don't know if there's, if we have any sort of cameras or anything that are pointing down onto that area, Chief might know, but it is locked and secured. And all ready to go. So two, two big projects that we can pretty much check off the list now.
Thank you, Trevor.
We have a quick question from Mayor Pro Tim.
Jen, we met last Thursday going over the agenda. The question was brought up about the status on the solar panels.
I followed up on that, Mayor Pro Tim, and we don't have an update at this moment, but we are working to get you some information. Okay, Trevor, moving on to the potential workshop for Parks and Arts Commission.
Yeah, so Parks and Arts, we're still waiting to set a date, but they would like to present a project that Nancy Hill with the Parks and Arts Commission. She's kind of headed up for the commissioners. If you are familiar with Hoop Town USA. They. They work with Parks and Arts Commissions to resurface basketball courts, outdoor courts. And use tie in a Parks and Arts Commission within the community courts to provide a nice mural. The new court that was that's located just below the podium on Riverfront Park. I believe there's six, six or eight hoops there, and it's a very, very large mural. It's it's very cool. And then City Spokane has many other courts that they've been working with Hoop Town, so. Parks and Arts Commission would like to schedule a workshop with you guys and kind of give you a little overview on what the plan is. And see what your guys' thoughts are, and we will be able to have a gentleman from Hoop Fest, Hoop Town USA. That would be able to join as well. So hopefully either the first or the second meeting in March, we'll be able to present you guys with a workshop and go from there.
Thank you, Trevor. And I think the chief was going to provide an update for you on the upcoming classes, chief.
Yeah, we're excited to offer some upcoming personal and business community educational opportunities for our residents and our businesses. First opportunity is our Women's Self-Defense Class that is tentatively planned for March nineteenth right now. That will be held at the Police Department. The purpose of the course is for our attendees to be cognizant of dangerous situations and and their options if they're confronted with danger. And also to practice some verbal avoidance and physical escape and intervention techniques in that Women's Self-Defense Class. So in order for our residents to qualify for that class, they have to be sixteen years, sixteen years of age or older. Resident of Liberty Lake can be willing to sign a liability waiver, and that class is limited to twenty percent of participants. And our second opportunity is our act or surviving an active attack. It is a business or personal active shooter educational. Opportunity for our residents and our officer, our own officer, Mike Marquin, is heading that. Endeavor, and you can contact the Police Department. He also has some some advertisements with his. Contact information out there on our Facebook page if any businesses or residents are interested in that class.
Great. Chief, just real quick, there's been a lot of interest since you guys started dangling the carrot out there. On on these classes, so I expect that to fill up really quickly. There there has been questions about kids attending. Obviously, you answered that question with regards to sixteen and up, but it led me to make a note a week or so ago. You know, if there's any way we could consider maybe doing. Some sort of class for the kid, for the younger set, you know, I know. Those ages you wait range widely, what you would discuss with a twelve-year-old might be obviously quite different than what you talk about with a six-year-old, but. I'd love for you guys to think about that as an option as well. Appreciate you doing.
We we actually have a couple of different classes, some advanced classes, and also some some classes for the younger, but. I actually partner with the deputy from Spokane County Sheriff's Office that I've been working with for about twenty years, over twenty years for this, teaching this class with him. And so we'll just have to plan those together and see when we can both be available to 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 get those to our our citizens. And so we'll just have to plan those together and see when we can both be available to, to get those to our, our citizens.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And our events, so there's a theme here tonight, and it looks like a lot of our events that we haven't seen in a couple of years are starting to make a comeback. So that's, that's a good sign. We have President's Day next Monday, Library and City Hall will be closed. February 24th is the McMorris Rogers Town Hall. And then we have Kiwanis Father Daughter Dance, March 5th. There, they have confirmed, Lisa has confirmed the MTC Zone Change Meeting at 6:00 PM on March 29th. The Easter egg hunt is planning its usual event at Pavilion Park, April 16th. And City is teaming up with Waste Management and the Shore Districts and Goodwill to have Spring Cleanup Day tentatively April 23rd. And if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
Jen, if you could, just in case there's anybody who's just now hearing about Item B, do you want to give a little bit of clarification around that? Because I just want to make sure that the audience knows that we're not getting political by hosting this town hall. So if you want to-
Yeah, this, this is kind of a, this is in a, I don't know, I guess I'd say it's an event where McMorris Rogers is coming in and using our facility. It is not a city-sponsored event, and it's kind of a one-way conversation. They're here to field conversation, questions, information from the public, the general public. So yeah, it is, it's a political statement.
And we would provide the same opportunity for anybody else.
That's correct.
Thanks. Alright, okay. Yes, it's the end of the report, so we will move on to workshops. So we are back to Trailhead. I'm looking at the clock, it is eight o'clock. I was wondering, oh yes, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
I'd like to make a recommendation to the council for consideration, because Trailhead, as I think, can probably take more time than we would anticipate. I would like to ask the council, would they consider moving Trailhead A to D? But I think some of the, like, C and D, I think we can get through very quickly. Maybe some of these others allow us some time.
So the motion is to move workshop Item A to after D. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Van Orman, any discussion? Questions? Not seeing any. All in favor? Oh, Councilmember Kurtz, I see your hand. Go ahead.
At the last meeting, I think that one of the things that I asked for was for Trailhead to be first on our workshop, so that if there were other things, because I think it is a priority of the council, that perhaps needed to fall off if we were taking a long time to discuss it, that we put our, our emphasis on the priority of Trailhead. So I would like to keep it as is.
I'll, I'll just weigh in on, on, you know, the, there was a brief comment at the end of our 6:00 PM workshop about putting a special meeting together for, for next Tuesday. So I'm not, that might be something you guys might want to talk about now, or at least consider with regards to the, the motion that's on the table. Yeah, get there. So, any other comments about moving, the, the first piece of, of moving from A to D? I don't see any other comments. Okay, so all those in favor of moving Item A to after D, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, just, just for, for accounting standpoint, make sure we get everybody correct. So it looks like I've got, just weigh in if I get this wrong. So Councilmember Foliar, Cargill, Van Orman, Kennedy, Baird in favor, and Councilmembers Kurtz and Dunn opposed, is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, just want to make sure I get that. Alright, so we'll go ahead and move Trailhead from A to after D. That brings us to City Administrator Executive Recruitment Firm. Kyle, were you going to kick this off? And we had a lot of information in our packet about this. And Kyle, you can kind of walk through what we have, who we contacted and whatnot.
Absolutely. So we reached out to six separate firms. We received a total, grand total of three proposals from two of those firms. I did hear back from two of them, they don't have the bandwidth to take on any new clients at this time, and I have not heard back yet from the other two. So in your packets, we have three proposals. And so I'll go kind of like, I'll, I'll, I'll start from the bottom and we'll scale up. And so, so the first one we received was from Proffman. And they are, they're local in terms of, you know, within our region, they're local. They're based on the west side. And we specifically asked for, you know, kind of, can you tailor an approach for, you know, allowing the city to kind of take the reins when it comes time to, you know, whittling down the last few candidates? And so they were very respect, very responsive to that. And so in your packets, you'll have two separate proposals from them. One involves what they call sourcing only. And that is essentially, you know, we have placement on their website. We can kind of pick and choose some à la carte items regarding direct mailers and other advertising options. And so that's kind of your, your minimum package when you're going out for, for recruitment. And so that one was, the, the fixed fee for that was sixty-five hundred. And then, as I said, you know, you have some à la carte items on there kind of as we desire to add on to, to kind of enhance that. Their second one that they brought was called sourcing and screening. And so they'll take, so, so in addition to the placement, you know, they'll develop a little bit more of a tailored approach to finding, you know, the, these, and selecting these candidates. And then they'll go through the first process of preliminary screening. And that is up to including, you know, fully vetting, including background and reference check, things of that nature. So that one, you're, you're taking it a, a step further where they're doing the first round of screening. And then they could take that batch of final candidates to, to the mayor and, and, and council for, for further interviews from there. City would take it from there. But, so, so that one's thirteen thousand five hundred. Also with some of those same à la carte items, the previously mentioned, the direct mailers, the increased advertising options, things of that nature. And so the last one we received was from an outfit by the name of Raftellus, I believe. And so they were formerly Novak Consulting Group. And they, I believe they are based in the Midwest. And they do have open recruitments nationwide, and they have tailored recruitments in the Pacific Northwest. They have current, they have current listings on their website for, for entities in, in Washington. So they're, they're not completely, you know, foreign to, to the area. And their strategy is a little bit more, I, I guess, controlled from their aspect from start to finish. So they have a lot more say or a lot more influence in the selection of the next city administrator. And they're essentially delivering, you know, maybe two or three final applicants for council and mayor consideration. They, then they feel very, if you read through their proposal, they feel very strongly that deviating from, you know, their set plan, they're not comfortable with that. And so up to and including, you know, any potential negotiations, you know, once a, once a selection is made. And so, so you have kind of three different approaches, which I'm actually kind of glad we got three separates kind of versions of how we want this to look. So mayor and council kind of bat this back and forth and, and come to, to conclusion on which route we want to go. From, from what I've seen, there aren't any rate structures that are completely out of whack. I think each rate structure reflects the service and the commitment that they're going to, you know, take in this role. And so with that, I'll kind of kick it to council for, for consideration and any questions that you may have. And if I can't get back to you right away, I will certainly reach out to them and, and follow up with any questions I may not be able to answer right away.
And the, the cost from the second one was thirty thousand? Did I read that right?
So the cost for the second one, which was-
Sorry, Kyle, the second, and the second provider.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So yeah, that, so that baseline cost is thirty thousand. They also have a similar menu option if you want to augment this outsourcing and advertising. You know, it would be upwards of thirty-five thousand.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I guess we'll start with questions. I'm not quite sure which one of your guys' hands went up first.
Whatever.
Councilmember Cargill, and then Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Kyle, on one of these I was reading, and now I lost it, because I got called on first, so I apologize. But one of these I was reading, if we didn't go with the candidate, they would start the process over again for a fee of twelve hundred. Which one, what was that? The first one, Proffman?
There are two separate ones, and so you're correct. And so if we go through the process and we don't select their candidate, so there are two separate scenarios, and I'll read them, and it's called their warranty. So if a candidate is not chosen from the first pool of applicants, we will repeat the process at no additional fee. The only additional cost we would incur for the second round would be those à la carte items, the direct mailers, the online advertising, things of that nature. If we go with the second round, the second Proffman, that was a, a little bit more in-depth in, in their recruitment. If a candidate is not chosen from the first pool of applicants, we will repeat the process for a fee of twelve hundred dollars plus the cost of expenses. And so I was reading through and, and, and I can, I, I will review, because I feel like I saw that in another one as well. But if I find that, I will let you guys know regarding the third proposal as well.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out if, if that was something similar in Raftellus, or since we're paying more, whether they let us do it again if, if we don't like. I mean, hopefully we won't get to that situation, but just-
Correct, right, but let me try to identify that, and I can follow up when I find that.
Alright, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at page two of two, for being expenses of thirteen thousand five hundred. It does say expenses include, and I was just looking at this. So my assumption is we could, we could look at this and say, okay, scratch certain items. The one I'm particularly looking at is consultant travel mileage RS rate, travel time eighty-five an hour, lodging and stuff. I assume we could take some of those things that we didn't care to have and eliminate those.
Absolutely, you know, so if we're looking to proceed with either, with any of these, I, I would like mayor and council, or council to identify, you know, what exact services we want to target. And then we can give you an exact price, an exact fee of what this is going to cost.
Okay. Oh, many years ago, I, I used a couple of these firms, not these particular ones, obviously. And they had good success with that. But as, as a council member, as a citizen, I'm disappointed that we had to go to this route, to the point that we're going to spend more money than we've ever had to before to be in this position. So I hope that as we move forward as a council, we don't make the same mistakes made in the past. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I know we, we're just talking a little bit about what we can and can't take out. And I guess I would really like to know what would be helpful from the city staff's perspective for them as what would, what do you guys, what do you guys want? Which, which of these pieces would you guys recommend? What do you think is helpful? And for me, I would rather have you guys put that forward and tell me what the budget line item is, because I, what I don't want to do is I don't want to micromanage and get into the, we think we need this as a council. I think that I would like to leave that to city staff to manage as a daily operations thing. So I think that would be my perspective on, on moving forward with this. It's just really for city staff to identify how you want to move forward and, and what that costs.
If I, if I may, may just jump in real quick. So, so from, from my standpoint, looking at it, you know, we really have the three options. And then there's the, the add-ons. And I think that, you know, it's, it's the additional fees and expenses, like, you know, do we do direct mail? Do we do, you know, whatever the advertising cases are that can be managed more at the, at the staff level? But I think I'd like to hear more from the council on how, how in-depth do you want the recruiting firm to go? Do you just want them to get us a pile of resumes and then we take it from there? Do we get a pile of resumes that they whittle down? Or do we get the resumes and basically have them do the whole process and hand us a couple of people at the end? Those are really the, the three major categories we're looking at. So I'd love to hear on that. I see Councilmember Baird's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. And Kyle, I really appreciate you grabbing these proposals, because I think that they were, just the range of services gives us a lot to consider. One of the things that causes me pause in this endeavor would be completely giving over the entire process to any firm. Specifically because it is the mayor's duty to appoint and the council does need to confirm. So in my opinion, giving the entire process to a third party that's not elected, not accountable to the citizens, to me is not a viable option. I would love to see a process where we partner with a recruiter to source our resumes and potentially qualify those or vet those, and then turn it over to the city to proceed. Thank you.
Councilmember Foliar.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to point up something out on the, I'll just call them the thirty thousand dollar option. And we'll call the option one, the thirteen thousand dollar option, how's that? Because I can't say their names. I can, but it's whatever. If you go to, I'm looking at our agenda, page thirty-two of sixty-six, page seventeen of their, their proposal. If you go to the very bottom paragraph, it says, as mentioned in the cover letter, we strongly believe the city should have a recruitment firm facilitate the entire search process in order to ensure successful process for the city and the candidates. However, if the city chooses to use our services for only activities one and two, then the total fixed fee is twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. So basically ten thousand dollars more. So then I have to ask myself how, on paper, because that's all, all we can judge our decision on, is what they've shown us on paper. So on paper, option thirty thousand dollar option, they gave great references. They're all twenty-year veterans doing this. It was a very well-done proposal. It got my attention right away, and then I choked a little bit when I got to the price part. But they obviously have done this more than once. And they have, it looks like they have a far reach nationwide. Okay, I'm not saying that that's right or wrong, that I'm encouraging them over the other. I just want everybody to, you know, take in all, all the different aspects of, you get what you pay for is what I truly believe. So while I'm not against the thirteen thousand dollar option, and I like the fact that they're local, they're in Issaquah, so I'll call that local, versus Cincinnati for option thirty thousand. It seems to me that we can, if you want to know what Activity Three is, Activity Three is interviews and selection. Seems to me that we can handle that ourselves. So I'm not, I'm not saying that I want to go that road. I'm just saying that's part of the equation for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just keep in track here. So before we go for a second round, Councilmember Van Orman or Councilmember Dunn, Councilmember Dunn has his hand up. Go ahead.
Thanks. I'd express support for the first of the two Proffman-provided proposals specifically for sourcing only. To Councilmember Baird's point, I believe that the staff and more of the mayor's actions in discerning through the candidates that have been surfaced is, I, I think of greater value, or I'd say more in responsive to the electeds in our community. So at the value point and the cost basis, the Proffman first suggested proposal, I find attractive.
Thank you. And Mayor, Councilmember Van Orman, if you have a second, you want to add?
Having been through this a few times, we've used both Waldron and Proffman. It's not out of line when you're looking at both sets. Thirty thousand is a bit much.
Twenty-three, seven, nine, five.
I, I think the biggest thing is making sure that we are involved. But ultimately, it's going to be the mayor's choice. So we want to give you all your, the help that we can. Just keep us involved, so we're right there in step with you.
Appreciate that. And I think, I think I saw Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Cargill's hands go back up. They're pointing at each other.
I agree with Councilman Baird, there's no way that I'm in favor of turning all this over to another company, regardless of what the cost is. I feel that we have the qualifications, it's council, we're able to, about inventing ourselves. I am in favor that we would utilize a company to go nationwide, get applications, they just sort here, bring us qualified individuals. And I also confirm that it is the mayor's choice, and it is the council to confirm that. Where we've got in the challenge is the interim. That's why we're sitting here today, is that RCW's is very clear, the mayor makes the choice. But it takes the council to make that confirmation. Is it, RCW's is very clear, the mayor makes the choice, but it takes the council to make that confirmation. So what happens, my recommendation would be for the councils to move forward, is that once we get to all these applications, that the entire council. Mayor and HR is involved at looking at these applications. So there's an involvement there. We come down to three, four, or wherever it is, that we're going to have interviews. Because I think that where we set up our system in the past, we've done it successfully when we hired Katie. We did it successfully when we hired our police chief. And it, we've set a precedent there. I know it's been mentioned, it hasn't been in writing. There's a lot of things out in writing, but a precedent does dictate that. Uh, the benefit would be is that by looking at all of those and then coming down to four or five, we can look at that kind of final. The mayor has the option saying, this is my choice. Now the benefit is, is the council has been there every step of the way. To be able to say, you're absolutely right, because that's where we are. That's what was done with the chief that we have now. It was very effective.
Just want to remind everybody, we're not talking about process. We're talking about choosing a firm. We can get into the process later. Uh, Councilmember Cargill.
Well, I did make a motion. I, that was not a motion.
I understand that. We just want to make sure the comments are relevant to the topic at hand and we're here to choose a firm.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, I will note, as Councilmember Fuller noted, that the Raftellus is from Cincinnati and, you know. We we have someone in the room who really loves her Cincinnati friend. No, uh, my my serious question is about, um, and maybe this is a question for Kyle. Um, it looks like Raftellus put a timeline on this. Um, is there a timeline from Proffman as well?
No, not not anything that that they have indicated otherwise outside of, you know. What, uh, I don't think they indicated anything on paper that I was aware of, but.
Yeah, I just wonder, you know, if if Proffman's going to take six months versus Raftellus, which it looks like would take about three, three to maybe three and a half. Yeah. Right. So, you know, I I'd be interested to know that about Proffman, you know, if they're going to take a lot longer, then maybe maybe we want to go with. Uh, the other one.
Let me, so I'll reach out to, so um, Sonia Proffman is obviously the president and I'll I'll reach out to her tomorrow. And get a feel for for a timeline for either the first two proposals and then I can, I'll follow up with council in an email.
Thanks.
Um, Councilmember Barrett, you have your hand up again.
Uh, thank you. Um, one other point that I want to remind council about is that. One of these firms charges a fee if we go through the entire process and don't make a selection, whereas. The other group will restart the process and that's included in their um, cost. So, you know. Worst-case scenario, you know, let's kind of, as we're making um, selections.
Right, great points. Anybody else have any comments, questions?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Fuller, go ahead.
I I don't know if anybody can answer this in the room. Um, uh, but part of the strategy of some of these companies has to be, they already have people, people in the hopper. Or people that they go to first. So, um, me, for me, it's a very important position for our city. Um, Jen's done a great job and I appreciate all the hard work she's done, but it is a very important position for the city. Um, and I just want to see us get the most amount of applicants possible. And, I mean, as I look at them on paper, that's all I have to judge it from, but. Um, one company seems bigger than the other to me, but I may be, maybe I'm reading into that wrong. I don't know. Does anybody have any insight to these companies as far as historical? I mean, this one company's been in business for a long, long time.
Uh, Councilmember Van Ormen, I think you've got some information.
Uh, two thousand, you know, one, we used same thing, same process, pretty much, um.
Did you use one of these companies?
Mm-hmm, we use Proffman and we've also used Waldron. So, they both were pretty much the same going through. You may have some on your staff within a city that. Isn't at the city administrator level, but it's your public works director that wants to go up.
Right.
Um, and there's many, many cities inside of the state of Washington that have qualified applicants.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so obviously we don't have any action item on the agenda, but I would kind of, maybe I would like to entertain a motion. To, so we can give staff direction on which contract to bring back, or Sean, I'll look to you. Is it an option to bring a couple? Um, a couple of them back and then have the, have the uh, council decide between those two. Give me, I'm going to put you on pause real quick, Councilmember Kurtz. I see your hand up.
Oh, I thought you were asking Sean. I was, I was.
I I am, I I told, I'm going to hold him off for a second so I can let you comment.
Oh, okay. I was actually going to make a motion um, to um. Go forward with the Proffman um, contract um, with the, as long, with the understanding, I guess, or the caveat that if their their timeline. Would match up um, or be potentially shorter than the other um, proposal.
Okay, um, for for clarification. Well, first, do we have a second?
Second.
One second from Councilmember Dunn, and I do, just to clarify, Councilmember Kurtz, before we get into the discussion, are um, it, would you like? Is your ask for the first or second option or to see both?
Well, I I think you were wanting to just pick between the two of them. Um. So that's where I, where I was making the motion if I, maybe I jumped the gun there a little bit, but um, and that was where I was. I guess I don't know between option one or two, whatever. If someone wants to amend my motion to go forward.
Two seconds. Now I'm going to, I'm going to go back to Sean, the question I had asked. So is it reasonable to? Um, with regards to Councilmember Kurtz's um, motion to bring back both options for the council to choose between when it comes to action items?
Sure, I mean, there's nothing that precludes the council from being able to consider various agreements. Um, and in this case, if it's one provider, you're just selecting one over the other.
Okay, thank you. So i- if that helps. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to bring back the Proffman. Um, contracts, I guess I would say, and um, if those are any discussion or comments. Councilmember Van Ormen.
The only comment that I probably would make would be giving it back to the mayor. Um, how much can the staff handle as far as doing it on her own? So, that's probably why we're looking at somebody else on the outside.
Oh, no, and that's fine. I just want to make sure I get get your feedback. Personally, you know, I value. Um, the additional work that would come with the second Proffman option. Um, you know, the the number of applications that come in, I'm sure is going to be multitudes of what we had before. And so, um, to redo some of that, that staff time, because, you know, just looking back on some of the ones we had the first time. Um, you know, there were s- some that. And we all get that and I'm trying to be kind. Um, so, some that you wonder if they read, if they read the job description, right? Um, you know, what they're they're grasping. Um, so I would value, you know, our our partner in this process. Make, being able to filter through that and then also do some of the initial screenings. And and my ask of them, and we could work with them on that, would be, you know, they in, as part of that second one, personal interviews. It says we'll conduct in-depth video conference or in-person interviews with the top six to five candidates. Um, I would, I would ask personally to be part of that and, um, again, we can talk process later. Um, but I'm sure those are things we could work out with the, with the provider. Councilmember Cargill.
Um. Mayor, and and I I guess maybe this is a question for Councilmember Kurtz or the, or the council as a whole. If Proffman comes back to us and says, it's going to take us nine months or six months or whatever. Are we comfortable waiting that long or do we want to then reconsider the Raftellus one, which is going to be? Um, about three months. I mean, I don't have a huge preference either way, other than obviously the Proffman one is a lot more economical. Um, and gives us, I think, a little more flexibility, but the timeline is what I'm stuck on a little bit.
But, and I think, uh, just to, to reiterate, I think what Councilmember Kurtz said, I think part of her motion was. Assuming the timeline comes in less than, um, the rough, the second, sorry, the third option, was that part of the motion?
Yeah, it was either less than or equal to, like, a could, you know, equal consideration for timeframe, but yeah, nine months would be way outside for me to feel comfortable. We need somebody in in the seat.
Yeah, so option three takes us through the end of May. So, that's about three months by the time we get a contract signed. And of course, if if in the next, you know, once we contact them back and we find out that it is longer than that, then we come back to the council with the discussion. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to share, if I could, the conversation, a couple of conversations I had with Katie. Who has a lot of experience over the years of something like this, and and she really educated me well enough with this, because you think about it, we just had elections time. And a lot of individuals who applied for these positions and didn't get the job that are qualified. So what happens, these companies such as Proffman or whoever they are, they already have a stable of individuals. Who they've already talked to, they've qualified through, they've been vetted through other sources. That they're sitting there with a lot of applications, so I think the timeframe hopefully would be quite short.
Great. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to bring back um, contract for for Proffman. Assuming the timeline is equal to or less than that of our third option, which takes us through the end of May. Um, so all in favor, um, please say aye and actually raise your hands. I make sure I get a right count here. All right, so I've got, keep them up. Okay, it looks, any opposed? All right, now it's saying, it looks like motion passes seven zero. We will um, get back in contact with Proffman with regards to timeline. Um, and assuming, like I said, it doesn't come back any longer than the end of May, you will see that contract at the next meeting. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
All right, next on our workshop list is revisiting the twenty-twenty-two pro shop purchases. Mayor Pro Tem, I think you had asked to bring this back.
Oh, actually, the council had asked to bring this back.
Well, yeah, well, you would, you would. So that's why I'm turning to you.
Well, if I I can just quickly summarize is that. Uh, our policy has always been that certain individuals have a thousand dollars that they could spend. Beyond that, going to five thousand, they need to go to their supervisor to get that approval and over that goes to the council. What came forward had merit. The merit was that, my understanding was this, and we have Chris on. On here, who can correctly find and correct. The idea was, because of the shortages and stuff, there might be some product that he would like to get. He could call the supplier, they say, we have it, we need your order today. The challenge is that now he has to go. And fill out the paperwork, get approval, he gets back to him in two or three days and then he doesn't get the product. So I, that was my understanding what the concern was. Certainly what it evolved into. And my recommendation at the time is that we'll, let's consider raising it to five thousand dollars. And that went down to, and actually went to twenty thousand. So for me, it's, we have a policy and procedure. And it's a check and balances for our, our employees and also this, everything that's involved. That's what I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll jump in here.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, if I recall, I think our last discussion was, we were, I got the sense everybody was. Interested in following our current policy or our policy and adjusting the limit for that. That portion of the operations to five thousand dollars. I didn't, I don't recall there being a lot of. Uh, against that concept. Uh, I think the reason why we're bringing it up again and we didn't take action at our last meeting was, we wanted to make sure it wasn't going to hamstring our golf pro, so I'd like to hear from him. Thank you.
You're on, Chris.
Uh, yeah, to clarify, it wasn't just, um, you know, just to get things because of the supply chain, but it was just more to streamline our. Um, the, the process that we do, more than I do to to buy things. So kind of how I said before, you know, when I first got here, we did eleven thousand dollars in merchandise and last year. We did a hundred and ten thousand dollars in merchandise. And the only reason I'm saying that is, that's just a lot more buying on my part. Um, and so the thousand-dollar threshold, um, when you're buying golf equipment. Uh, three drivers gets me over a thousand dollars and I I I, I end up buying um, twenty-four to thirty of those a year. So it just ended up being um, kind of a lot of work for staff, staff time for myself and then also Anne Marie. And um, so it was more about the, the amount, um, more than anything else. But it was more because I would have to do it so many times. I don't know if that's making sense, but it's, it's just the amount of time that. It's just trying to streamline our process, so it's just not staff time of me putting something together, sending it to Anne Marie, then sending it back to me and then me putting in springbook. And then it going to, um, usually was Katie and then she would, she would approve it. Um, and then I could go ahead and buy it. Um, that was fine when we were at a smaller amount of purchasing of merchandise, but. Now that we're getting up to these larger, not larger amount, it's just a larger amount in in whole, um, it's just a lot more, a lot more time. So, um, I, I, I'm not sure if it was me or Anne Marie or or RJ at the time, but we kind of came up with. What if we had a blanket PO? Because all of the, all of these are for things that are resold. So this isn't, I'm not buying a computer, I'm not buying a, a ranged cart or anything like that. This is purely something that is in and and out. I, I purchased it, I put it in the golf shop, we sell it and it's gone. Um, and and all of those checks that are for those, uh, per, these POs or these purchases. And goes to the council for approval as far as the check. If, if there was ever a check that came up for any merchandise and somebody had a question about it, I'd be more than happy. To explain why, why I purchased that. Um, so, yes, we were trying to do it as one big PO just to save some time, but. It definitely would help if we went up to the, the five thousand dollar mark, just so some of these larger ones. Um, larger purchases I do from some companies. Um, aren't cut up into a bunch of different POs, I guess, is what I'm saying, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Barrett.
Thank you, um, Chris, for that explanation. I think where I'm kind of. Torn on this is I I greatly respect what Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Kennedy said about, you know, rules and procedures are. There for a reason. And I know Councilmember Van Ormen reiterated that at our prior meeting as well. On the other hand, if our policies are so rigid that there is no flexibility for a business to operate. Which the golf course is a business and I know it's a city-run business, but. To, uh, Chris's point, while it doesn't prevent ordering, right, because you can still get that approved. Um, you know, if we can alleviate some of the burden of staff time. Uh, to me, that's one of the flexibility, uh, you know, that's one of the reasons for flexibility in a role. Um, I would not be opposed to revising our financial policy. Uh, to accommodate this change, if that would be council's desire. Um, instead of uh, just approving this as a one-off scenario. But I do just want to bear in mind that, you know, on one hand, you have rules and procedures. On the other hand, you do have to be flexible when running a business, especially one where it is resale. Thank you.
See, the other, Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, I too, uh, support the ability to streamline or improve government efficiency. Um, I value specifically Chris Johnson's work, uh, recognizing the growth that he's mentioned. Um, I believe that increasing the amount as he's requested to the five thousand dollar level, uh, creates um. Less expense and less challenging time for us to be able to operate. Uh, further demonstrating that checks are presented in action item every week also presents the opportunity to question or to challenge. Uh, any of the expenses which he generates. I support changes to policy to enable that.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Van Ormen.
Figured I'd weigh in just a little bit, um. Most of you weren't here except for a few during uh, two thousand eight to two thousand ten. And uh, when you've got a recession and you've got a policy such as this, with that checks and balances. And you have to go from not just one of your departments, but all of your departments and treat them the same. We were lucky if we could figure out if we've got enough for salaries, much less, you know, extra golf equipment. I really urge the council to think wisely, even though we have an enterprise fund with the golf course. It is also taxpayers' money and we do need to treat it a little differently than just a business with an enterprise fund. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Van Ormen. I was going to say, absolutely correct. There's, it is one thing that we treat all of our dollar amount that we do for the city, the roads, salt, things of the sort here. But because it is a business, it becomes extremely more important, because we're, we're, we're working with law, small items. And the accounting becomes absolutely critical. If anything, you become more stringent because of business. And why is because this is the citizens' money and there has to be more accountability there. Now, in the last meeting, I'd recommended, and I I'm prepared to make a motion, that we would raise the option to five thousand dollars. It still would take the su- supervision along with the. It still would take the supervision along with the gen in this case, administrator, to coordinate that. I was looking at the information what was supplied last time and got it again. And I was looking at most the dates, there was nine to ten orders that accumulate to quite a bit of money. But they were ordered all on one date. So I would think if that's the case, that I think what Chris has been able to do is that he's been able to take all of these things which amount to seven, eight, nine, ten thousand dollars. That he's ordered like on September twenty seventh, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items representing five, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, maybe fifteen thousand dollars that he was ordered in one time. So I think what would happen, if we do get to five thousand, if I'm comfortable with that, still checks and balances, he would still be able to order a great amount at one time and really be dealing with three. If it was a fifteen thousand dollar order. Does that make sense? Do I need to show it up for a motion?
I have one over here ready for you, so.
Please go.
Can I jump in?
Councilmember Fuller?
I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion to rescind the previously approved amount for the pro shop supply purchases of twenty thousand dollars and change to a five thousand dollar maximum amount.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So procedurally wise, Sean, that was put to, that was resolution or was it ordinance? I've, I've got it right here. What was it?
I think it was just a financial policy.
Sure. Was it just a fine policy? Okay, I just want to make sure that we didn't have to rescind any resolutions or?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Kelsey.
I'm sorry, who just seconded that motion?
Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second on the floor to basically amend the last, the last approval, changing the limit from twenty thousand to five thousand. Is that stated correctly? Okay, all right. So if there's no further discussion. Let's see, oh, Chris, go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I'm curious as to your thoughts on this and how this is going to impact you. And then my second question, I guess, would just be per the point that was made at the last meeting and the point that was made earlier, does this set a precedent for the other city departments to come to us and want to do the same thing? So maybe, Chris, you can answer that first.
Yes, it does help, for sure. Going from a thousand threshold to just under five thousand will, will definitely make it to where, you know, if I, if I'm ordering fifteen thousand dollars from one company, you know, I, I sit down in the fall, all these companies, I sit down in the fall and we put an order together and then I wait till January, get the funds and then decide out of everything that I ordered, what I'm actually going to order, all of them are, are held until then. So yes, instead of me doing, in that example that gave about fifteen thousand dollars, instead of me doing fifteen of them, now I'm doing five of them. It's still the same, you know, the same purchase, but it's, it just makes it a little bit easier and not so many, I guess.
All right, thank you. So there's no other further comments or questions. I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor of approving the change from twenty thousand to five to, less than five thousand, right? I'll make sure I get that. Four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine ninety-nine. Please say aye and actually raise your hand so I can make sure I get the votes correct. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Want to hold, keep holding up. I'm slow tonight, guys. Okay, all, any opposed? Okay, all right. So Kelsey, for the record, those in favor, Councilmember Fuller, Kurtz, Kennedy, Baird and Dunn. Those opposed, councilmembers Cargill and Van Orman. So we will go ahead and make that change. And Kyle, my ask to you, and you and I can follow up when I get back from my trip is if we can take a look at the financial policy. I don't recall off the top of my head if we actually have a specific policy surrounding blanket POs. If not, I think maybe, maybe we need to look at that because then it could apply for everybody. I've, most every business I've worked for in the past works with blanket POs in some form or another, either receiving them or giving them out. So maybe we need to look at some additional changes going forward.
Certainly.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
You know, be honest, Mayor, this is such an important thing. I think that you ought to maybe set a meeting for the Friday.
Yeah, you can run that meeting. I'll, I'll be snorkeling in Hawaii. Thanks for the suggestion, though. Appreciate it. All right, resolution on local income tax ban. So we had talked about this at the last meeting and it come as a suggestion from Councilmember Cargill and the and we had discussed it at the last workshop with some changes. And so there should be a revised version in your packet. So I want to give everybody an opportunity to weigh in on that. Councilmember Cargill, I don't know if you want to go ahead and start the conversation?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yes, as we discussed in the last meeting, there was some concern, I know, about some of the language that was, that was in there, that it could be viewed as confusing or even political. So that language was removed. And then I know Sean had checked as well as to whether it needed to be a resolution or an ordinance and came back that it needed to be a resolution. So that is what is in the packets.
All right, so let me flip to the right page here, you guys. Are there any questions or comments on the revised language? Because if there's not, then we'll take a vote of the council to see about bringing this back as an action item at the next meeting. So open it up to comments or questions.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
For the benefit of the public, can you display the resolution on our screen?
Yeah, Todd, could you put that up? It's agenda bill. Let me get there. You're going to beat me to it, aren't you?
Page thirty-seven of our packet.
Ninety. Getting used to the new technology, everybody. Apologize as we try to remember to get these things up there. The page number on that.
Yeah, it's page thirty-seven of our packet is the draft, if that's helpful.
So while Todd's bringing that up, I would entertain anybody in the public to just filter any comments, positive or negative, to, to Todd in the chat so we can review them later about how, how you guys are liking the, the technology updates. We're still still getting used to some of it and there'll be some additional changes, but hopefully this is better for everybody.
Hey, Todd, I have it. If you want to, just give me permission to share, I can just share.
Great.
Okay, here it is. There it is.
Here we are. All right, here it is. I'll just leave that up for a moment for our, our audience to take it in a little bit. And so while they're doing that, does the council, again, have any questions or comments about the updated version? Councilmember Cargill?
Can I just make a motion then, since there doesn't appear to be any comments that we bring this back as resolution at the March first meeting?
Okay, the motion is to bring back the income tax ban resolution back for action on the March first meeting. We have a second.
Second?
We have a second from Councilmember Baird. All right, I'm going to ask one more time because I can. Any comments or questions before we go to vote? All right, not seeing or hearing any, I'll go ahead and all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hands, make my way around.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much. So Kelsey, for record keeping, those in favor, councilmembers Fuller, Cargill, Van Orman, Kennedy, Baird. Those opposed, councilmembers Kurtz and Dunn. All right, so it's like we will be, have this back for action at the next meeting. Thank you.
Before we get into final jeopardy here on the trailhead?
Yeah.
Can we take a short break?
As far as anybody opposed to taking a quick five?
Not at all.
All right, we'll be back in five minutes, guys. Welcome back. Thanks for, thanks for bearing with us for that short break. So we are up to our trailhead workshop. And I believe Mayor Pro Tim has a motion to me.
I do, thank you, Mayor. I would make a motion that we restrict our conversation to fifteen minutes to see if we can get that accomplished. Because it seemed to be, appear from the earlier meeting, that there might be an interest of having a workshop on next Tuesday. If that's the case, I certainly would hope that we could restrict amount of time. We don't want the audience falling asleep on us.
And we have city business still to get through. Okay, so there's a motion to limit this piece. Well, that's right. Well, I was going to ask, that's what I was doing. I was going to repeat it and ask for a second. All are getting ahead of me. So a motion is to limit the discussion on trailhead to fifteen minutes for tonight. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second. Woo, almost, you almost, almost to beat the jeopardy clock there.
Trying to give people a chance.
All right, we have a second by Councilmember Baird. Any discussion? Not seeing or hearing any. All in favor of limiting to fifteen minutes for this section, please say aye. Got one aye, two ayes. We got, we got. All right, those opposed? All right, Kelsey, I'll get you that count later. So we are not limiting to fifteen minutes. So I would just encourage everybody to not let this drag on too long. And we would, I would actually also entertain someone making a motion at some point during the next bit of this conversation to schedule that special workshop on the twenty-second. Okay, Councilmember Dunn?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to schedule a special meeting for the twenty-second topic trailhead.
All right, we have a motion to schedule a meeting on the twenty-second for trailhead. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilmember Baird. Any questions? Discussion, Councilmember Fuller?
Yeah, what would be the purpose of the meeting? What were we looking to accomplish?
Go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
I believe there was discussion of risk that potentially included conversation with the risk management group for the city.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Baird?
To clarify, is that executive session only or would it include executive? Well, obviously it would include both because we have to return from executive session. But to clarify, would that special meeting include an executive session with clear risk?
Looks like Lisa's prepped to answer.
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Thank you.
So to start with executive session, then come out, look for any further discussion. Mayor Pro Tim?
I would, I would also hope that in that meeting, if we do decide to do that, that we can at least come out of that with an absolute firm commitment on where we're going. If nothing else, the driving range. So we can at least say, okay, we've made a decision. Here's where we're going.
Councilmember Fuller?
I'll jump in again. Thank you. I love special meetings. No, seriously, I don't, I don't mind doing the time. I've said it before. I just, I don't want, I want it to be productive. So for me, between now and then, a question I would like to see answered maybe from, and I've referred to them as our professional team in the past, but our team of architects, construction folks and, and our staff is, I know they presented this evening some options on driving range and that really, we haven't been able to get past that. So I'm wondering, is it possible that we can discuss that with some numbers associated with less money? As we have, I've already discussed this evening for a short while regarding cheaper options on how to address the driving range. I understand the clear risk thing will be part of it, but I don't want to come out of that meeting and have say, okay, X, Y, Z, and then we have to wait another week or two to find out what it's going to cost to, I mean, can we agree that we don't want to spend three and a half billion dollars on the driving range? Can we agree that we want to spend a lesser amount? And I'm not saying I'm looking to answer that right this second. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna vote on a special meeting, there's got to be some things we got to get out of it for me.
So, so in, in my, my interpretation of this next piece of this workshop is to come out of next, whatever it is, fifteen, twenty minutes or whatever it is, with the specific asks for that special meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim? I apologize.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I think one of my goals for that meeting is I think that we've heard that the, the longer we delay in a decision, though we've, the longer we delay in a decision, the more impact it has on the project. And so I would really like us to walk away with, I think, the funding question answered that night. We, we continue to gather information. I think all the questions everybody's asking are good. I think they're going to help us make a more informed decision. But I think at the end of the day, we have to have all the data we need. And I think we do need to walk away next week with a decision. That would be why I would want to be a part of the meeting.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you.
No, okay. All right, if there's no further comments, we'll go ahead and vote. The motion on the floor is to schedule a special meeting on the twenty-second. Councilmember Dunn, since you made the motion, what time are you looking for?
Let's call it a seven o'clock, seven o'clock special meeting.
All right, sorry, I was just conferring with, with council here. All right, so those in favor of scheduling a special meeting on the twenty-second at seven o'clock on trailhead, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm getting faster. Okay, all right, and those opposed? All right, we have councilmembers Fuller, Kurtz, Van Orman, Kennedy, Baird and Dunn in favor with Councilmember Cargill dissenting. So looks like we have a meeting on the twenty-second. I will apologize now. I will not be here. So Mayor Pro Tim gets the pleasure of running that meeting.
Well, I think it's important that you're here for them.
If you want to refund all my, all my tickets, that'd be great.
I'll get ahold of Scott later.
No, I really do wish I could be there, you guys, but I will, I will make a point, obviously, of watching recording before, before we get together again. So thank you for that. So we are back to discussing trailheads. So I'd like to hear from you guys a little bit more as, you know, what you guys want to hear from the team when you guys get together on the twenty-second or any questions you want to ask now that you can answer. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I would hope in the discussion we've been having this evening, no matter how long it takes, that we have some absolute direction for staff, whoever it's going to be, to bring back specific things so we can make decisions on next Tuesday. We don't keep kicking this can down the road. We actually had to get a bigger can because the other one's been beat up so much. One thing that I have a concern with is that we went to the low flight balls and that corrected the main issue that we had. The balls were going over, some still go over because of this twenty-one feet on the south side, twenty-five. But what has not happened is the golf balls no longer really end up down at the yard green. Our son who lives back here, there's nine homes. I've been visiting those individuals on a regular basis. They no longer see any yellow balls down there. The ones that they do see down there, drive over on the south side or east side of the net, you will see that in some spots, there's thirty foot between the poles that Councilman Fuller and I would look at. And there's three to four inches of opening there where the yellow balls get to the point they go across a road and down. So for me, I want to see that we continue with the low flight balls. I know I've heard from the golf pro that a few individuals would rather hit the other balls. But I would go along with that if our revenue hasn't increased each year. So I know that we went to low flight balls. One of the concerns was, was said to the council, we're going to have individuals, we're going to lose revenue. People won't want to come and hit those low flight balls. Well, well, that's been solved. They still continue to come and our revenues gone up. So I feel we need to keep the low flight balls.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Dunn?
I'd speak in line to Councilmember Kennedy in that the low density or low flight balls, I think, are improving the condition, but to be direct, they're not resolving it. My reflection on the clear risk determination, look forward to more, much more clarification with that, with that group next week. But that, you know, they're, they're an improvement, but not a true resolution, I think, of the, the challenge at hand. I am grateful for the comments provided by the trajectory analysis in that they are not incorporating low flight, I call it, into that gesture. They are regulation. We have reasonable expectation that the low flight balls that we've adopted would be somewhat underneath that. But that, that these calculations were not made using that and taking that into account. But that, um, that these calculations were not made using that and taking that into account. But that's part of that risk profile, uh, and risk posture, uh, discussion that we need to have as a group. So, thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Bea Norman.
My hope is that when we go ahead and meet again on February twenty-second, that we talk about how much we can actually purchase. Whether it's the square footage on the building to what we can handle inside of our own budget, trying to keep prices down for the public. I mean, twenty years is a long time. If we can finance a whole lot less than that and do a, a budget that basically we're putting in a little bit every year until it's paid off, I would be truly in favor of that one.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Baird.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This question may be better asked for Kyle. And Kyle, if you don't have the numbers right now, totally understood. I, I know in your projections on the bonding, right, we have the fifteen, twenty, thirty-year plans. First, uh, with a two million dollar down payment versus a three million dollar down payment. I would like to hear a little bit more of if two or three million is the only, um, down payment that would be affordable. Or if, you know, council should decide to go with one of the higher cost options. If we are, if the city is able to grow more toward a down payment, I don't know if you have that answer right now. I would be interested in seeing that for sure by our next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, and I can speak to it a little bit. Uh, i- it's tough to give you different snapshots in time, uh, two months down the road or four months down the road with the progression of different projects that we have already in the hop. And so what comes to play when we're, when we're talking about three or four even more down, you know, our current, uh, so we just processed a payment for Department of Transportation for nine hundred and something the name were just, just north of nine hundred thousand dollars. And so the general fund acts as, uh, a cash flow for those payments. And then that gets reimbursed by our lift and TIF programs. So we have, uh, upcoming payments. We have, uh, different mechanisms that, that we try to account for, you know, as these projects unfold. And what happens if everything happens at once, all of a sudden, you know, five or six million dollars with the amount of projects that we have going on right now can disappear really quick. They're not gone forever. And we're always in the process of getting these reimbursements, but reimbursements take time. And so the, the hesitation I have with putting a, a lot down is those ones are committed and probably spent in the next four months. And so if we have a convergence of different projects, we're, 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 I don't want to say we're ahead of schedule, but DOT and Daggersham were able to work through a good chunk of the winter on the overpass. And so when we, if we think, you know, we're, we're planning for cash flows, maybe towards the summer or fall, uh, for some of that stuff to come out and we're gonna see it, you know, we're seeing it in December and January and February. It's, it's hard to account for those scenarios playing out when you think something's gonna happen at X time, but all of a sudden, all of these different projects are, uh, were paying out at the same time. We, we run into some short-term cash flow issues. That is kind of my primary concern with committing so much upfront. And then there, there was a discussion piece that, that gained some traction last year with a former council member who happens to be a professional in this realm. And so he might actually provide value to council in terms of showing how we can, how we can show the value of an annual payment in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three versus an annual payment in twenty forty-three and, uh, and things of that nature. Cause the, the cost is fixed. And so, you know, the amount, so it's like that annual payment's gonna be worth a lot more today than it is in twenty years. And so our, our ability to, um, to put these other funds that we have to, to other potentially better uses is, is another consideration that, that I think council needs to, uh, keep, keep their mind on as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Cargill.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so I just wanna, I just wanna point out three things, especially for those who may have missed the, the six o'clock meeting. Um, and three reasons why I'm really concerned about any of these directions. Uh, we've made the statement all along that the budget's gonna be eight point four, eight point four, eight point four. As we mentioned earlier in the six o'clock, if we look at the amount that would, we would be spending total, even at the minimum, it's gonna be much higher than that. As I mentioned, I, I did the math before we, we came in today. And if, if we were to do, let's say, a ten million dollar option, we're costing every citizen in our city about nine hundred dollars. If we were to do the twelve million, it's gonna be upwards of eleven hundred dollars. If we're gonna do the sixteen million, which is AKA the, um, the eleven point nine. If we were to do that, we're costing every citizen fifteen hundred dollars. I cannot go home to my kids and say, hey, congratulations, we're now owing the city six thousand dollars for the next twenty years or fifteen years or thirty years, whatever we choose, uh, to fund this facility. I just, I can't, I can't do that. I also have a big concern about the impact the neighbors will feel from these high poles. A pole that is the size of the clock tower times thirty in this neighborhood. I just, I don't, I think the citizens need to have more of a say in this. And to the point that Kyle made earlier, if the economy goes south or if something happens with the amount of money, the money that we have coming in, we would have deferred maintenance on other projects. So the, the golf course would take priority. And again, I cannot say, no, we shouldn't do this project or that project in the city, which may have more impact simply because we've got a six hundred thousand dollar payment that we have to make to the golf course one year. So those are my big concerns. I still believe, as I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, that this is a project of such significance that the public has to be involved in the process. I really believe that we should put it to a public vote. Once the council comes to a decision on, here's the facility, here's what we're finding to do, here's the timeline, here's the cost, and then let the public be involved in that process. That's my opinion. And, and it will stay that, uh, opinion until some of these numbers or some of this information changes. Thank you.
Um, before I take any other council, council comments, I would just kind of like to jump in just to, just to make sure the public understands where the money to pay for these bond payments would be coming from. Sure, the two or three million dollars has come in from various avenues. Part property tax goes to the library and doesn't even cover the library and police combined. So we run the city mostly on sales tax, which is paid for by many, many other people besides people who just live in here on Liberty Lake. With regards to the bond payments for this project, again, not talking about the, whatever we might put down. Those are scheduled to come out of REIT funds, which we collect on every piece of real estate when there's a transaction. It is not going to be an increase in property taxes. It is not going to be an increase in sales tax. It is strictly on those property sales, not just homes, but on businesses, on apartments, everything else. So I don't want the misconception getting out there to our residents that they're gonna see an additional fee every year to make these bond payments. And Kyle, if you want to expand on that at all, go for it.
Uh, no, you're right on. So yeah, this is, uh, yeah, the, these are, real estate excise tax has been the fund that has been identified to handle these payments. Uh, and so what we're trying to offset with what we had discussed with the increased, you know, return on investment is trying to mitigate that annual payment, uh, that is typically, you know, public infrastructure improvements. That's kind of a broad term. But public facilities, uh, roads, parks, things of that nature, uh, which this easily falls into. And that's why it was identified as such. And so, uh, when we go out, uh, to finalize our financing, we will indicate that the general fund will be used as an emergency. But it is not ever intended to be used to, uh, make these annual payments, only in the case that, uh, real estate excise tax and any excess, revenue generated by the golf course facility is not enough to make those annual payments.
Yeah, and just, and just as an example, I think I mentioned at a previous meeting, all the property between Rocky, north of Rocky Hill and Hawkstone just sold in December for upwards of fifteen million dollars. We collected REIT on that. Most of the properties around Peterbilt and Christian Brothers and Liberty RV, all that is sold in the last six months. So every time that happens, you know, we get money in, in addition to, obviously, the residences and stuff. But the everyday citizen is not gonna see an annual bill for this. It, it is collected during the, uh, through those REIT funds.
That is correct, absolutely correct, so.
Right, Councilmember Cargill, I see your hand up if you had another comment.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I agree. I understand that. My concern is that tax money is tax money. Whether it's coming from the real estate, uh, excise tax, whether it's coming from the sales tax, whether it's coming from the property tax, it's coming from the citizens in one form or another. So I understand that there's different buckets and not everyone, you know, understands the different buckets that it's coming from. My concern is that, as Kyle said earlier, uh, because we're, we're allocating so much to this one particular source that, as he just mentioned, the general fund could be used as backup, which takes, could potentially take money away from other things that the city might need.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or requests for, um, next week's meeting? Mayor Pro Tim.
Has everybody had an opportunity to speak?
Um, uh, Councilmember Follier hasn't, neither has Councilmember Kurtz. Do you guys want to jump in?
Mine's long.
Councilmember Kurtz, anything before we go back?
When, uh, when have I not?
Nope, okay. Floor's yours, Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, very good. For me, since day one of all the years being involved with Trailhead on it, the city bought that for the fifty-four acres. We didn't want a golf course. We didn't want a restaurant. We didn't want a driving range. We wanted fifty-four acres. And that's what we bought. But we've got the golf course. I've been in advocate since day one. We need to do something to preserve, protect, and promote the golf there for the citizens. Even though it was only eight percent, that's a hangup for me. There is an asset there. And when we've looked at seriously what our true costs are, or close to our costs, to the revenue, we were only subsidized in a short amount. Where that changes is once we do some addition to it. So every time I have to go back to page twenty-four in our budget guide, which really dictates what the budget's going to be. There, we have talked about eight million, ten million, twelve million, sixteen million over a period of time. But here's what, here's our marching orders. And it says very clearly, the city will charge user fees. Then it goes on to say the city will set fees, not maybe, should, ought to consider it. Says the city will set fees and user charges for each enterprise fund, such as a golf course, at a level that fully supports, not close, not around, but fully supports the total direct and indirect cost of the activity. The proposed rate shall also take into account debt service coverage commitments made by the city for the particular enterprise fund. Folks, there's no other way to interpret that. If we went by that alone, we wouldn't have a golf course. We wouldn't have the driving range. Why? Cause it doesn't support enough charge for the fees to maintain that. So what we have to look at, what I have to look at for a vote, am I gonna go by the letter of the law or what's recommended? Or can I compromise? I've been compromising for Trailhead since before I was ever elected. And I'm still willing to do that because I think there's intrinsic value there. But if we go by that alone, what we have to look at, in my opinion, is the building, what we have and what we can do with that, and also the driving range. And the idea of expanding this or moving things, or the second issue, which has to be addressed tonight because it's never been talked about, is that every one of these proposals, we have thirty-five hundred square feet for a cart mark. Are you kidding me? In a, in the first proposal for seven thousand square feet, half of that is for a cart mark. The other eighteen whole courses in this town, none of them are in the main building. One of them has a building of about three thousand square feet that is all enclosed, and they use it for more things than just the cart storage. The other one has a little less square footage, but it has a cement wall around it, post or wall, and there's no cover at all, which is out in the open. But none of them are right where the clubhouse is. When you go over to, um, Post Falls and go to a fabulous course, excellent restaurant, great setup they have over there at Highlands, where Chris is very familiar with. That's where he came from. They have sixty-one carts and they have an open space fenced in with no covering, but it's not in the main building. So it makes no sense to me that we can move forward and allow thirty-five hundred square feet for have carts there or any storage for carts. Now, when Councilman Follier and I walked the whole area over a minute period of time, we could put in cart storage easily, metal building, not spend a lot of money for it, over by City Hall, right behind where we have the building right here. There's more than adequate room, in my opinion, where we used to have a lot of the storage of ugly stuff that the neighbors saw over here, and now we moved it over to our yard. So it can go there. And as Chris needs golf carts, he will know that if he needs ten or fifteen or six or eight brought out, as the golfers show up, they take the carts. As they leave, they go over and get some more carts. But to spend this kind of money for cart storage, when it's so critical, we have something for the citizens, is ludicrous. And I have to go back to this paragraph because for any of us, if we stick to that, we can't have the golf course. If we compromise, we're not going according to what we say we have to do. So if we're gonna compromise, if I'm gonna have to compromise, it's gotta be on a bare bones, bare bones.
Okay, um, Chris, I'd be remiss if I didn't let you have, have a chance to respond to the, the, the concerns about the, the size of the barn. I know we've, we've talked about it before, but if you would do me the favor of, um, kind of walking through the size requirement and why, and why on the location, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and, um, Keith and Scott might be able to help me a little bit too on this is the, the cart stores, reusing the downstairs, they, they were putting in all the mechanicals for it. So it's, it's not the whole thing is for cart stores. We have fourteen carts right now. Um, I've said it before, we run out of carts on a daily basis. I was proposing twenty-four carts, which over the, the eight years of, of, um, uh, rotating them would bring in, uh, about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that was before, um, we were even talking about a rate increase. So the, the carts themselves are our third largest revenue source behind the golf course and the driving range. Um, I, I did work at the Highlands and I did, I did, uh, deal with the sixty-one carts that were outside. And the biggest problem with putting them outside, and, and anybody can go over and ask kid at Liberty Lake also is, all the other golf courses pretty much hold their carts for four or five years. A lot of them are leased and they turn them back over. When you put them outside, um, the likelihood of them lasting nine, even nine years, which we're on right now for the fourteen carts, in my opinions, i- is not gonna happen. It needs to be at least covered. So the idea of reusing the downstairs and reusing the, the building itself, in talking about, you know, what else could you put in the basement? Right now, we have a banquet room in the basement that nobody wants to use because it's in a basement. So, um, if we put the simulators in the basement, now my staff doubles because I have to have staff in the golf shop and then they have to have staff in, in the simulator room. If I put the, the golf carts over at City Hall, right now, when we open, one person opens in the morning and they pull up the golf carts. So at other golf courses I have worked at, you have a staff member that solely just brings up golf carts, which that's a lot of, a lot of labor over a, a, a long amount of time. So if they were at City Hall, now I have to have another staff member that's just moving carts. Um, so there's a lot of logistics involved in it. Yes, if there was a metal building in the corner of the parking lot that was closer, that one person could come over and, and grab them and move it over. Yeah, that would definitely work. Um, but, but moving it all the way to over by City Hall, not very cost-effective and, and even less efficient than we are right now. Circling Raven Golf Course, same thing, just using another one of the example, theirs is across the street in a big, in, in a big barn. And they have two people, staff people, that bring up carts. Not solely their only job to bring golf courts over because it takes that amount of time to bring them over. So, uh, I mean, I, I have looked at it. We, we did discuss about why putting it in the basement. I think that's why we, we looked back at, at using the basement as, um, you know, it's not, it's not great for any other part of the building, except storage, and then we can use mechanical and put it down. um, except storage and then we can use mechanical and put it down there, which also makes the the footprint upstairs can be smaller because now all that stuff is put down in the basement.
Chris, 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 if I may offer a little bit of additional clarification relative to the square footage, the building that's being proposed is ten thousand four hundred square feet total. The cart storage is a reuse of the existing old foundation, which, as you stated, isn't suitable for much other than car storage, cart storage, representing three thousand square feet. So what's left on the main level is seven thousand four hundred square feet of new building. So um, it it isn't half of the building. It's less than that. It's less than a third of the building, about a third.
Great, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, thank, thank Chris, thank you. I do appreciate that. Um, I appreciate you giving the information, but also what you're confirming to me is that we're not going to ever be in a position to charge enough to pay for this debt. I don't care what we put over there. It's not going to happen. The numbers just aren't there. And I appreciate Mr. Roth making your point there. But if I understand correctly, what you said is what we're talking about is a ten thousand square foot building. But I hope that you've been listening at the six o'clock meeting, which I know you were, and I think what's being talked about now is that we're focusing on eight point four. Eight point four is something we've talked about. So I think the confirmation has to be, is that something we can live with, with the dollar amount? And the sudden jump, assume we're going to jump to to ten thousand square foot, which puts us up to over ten million dollars. Once again, I have to come back to this paragraph. How can I justify that vote? There's nothing we're going to be able to raise rates there to pay for four hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment, if we go eight point four or six hundred and some odd thousand dollars, if we go ten, twelve million dollars. It will never happen. And once we realize that and realize that where we've been for a long period of time, that we were subsidizing the golf course about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And it was determined if we got rid of the golf course completely and just had the fifty-four acres, it would cost about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just to maintain that. So a difference of about fifty, sixty thousand dollars, we had the golf course and the driving range. Where that changes is when we start to remodel. Because now we're taking citizens' long-term income from sources we would use for something else because we've never made any money there. If we made money, we would have retained earnings to put forward to these improvements. We don't have that. So let's don't move forward with the idea that if we kick the budget up, that we're going to make more money. Or we add a virtual golf or something like that. It's not going to happen.
Any other comments from council?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Follier.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick. Uh, I guess I have a little, I I kind of want to respond to Councilmember Cargill a little bit. Um, and a little bit of a different approach on the purpose of doing this project. Um, I look at, you you've all heard the history, we bought sixty-five acres, so we didn't have apartments and all this other stuff, keep the open space, totally support that. I I've lived here since ninety-nine, and I feel like that golf course has been kind of a landmark for this city. Okay, and the building has been there just as long, and it's kind of a landmark of the city. Um, but I don't view that facility any differently than I do the parks we have. They're beautiful parks. We put three million dollars into a park over in River District, did we not? Um, I don't go there. I drive through there to look at the light show. Thank you, sir. I don't go to the Brazilian Park because I'm on my boat of a weekend, but it's still there and we just did a million dollar irrigation ticks on it. Fair enough. I mean, we have walking trails, we have sidewalks we take care of, we have farmer's market. We put in bathrooms over there. We've improved that area for farmer's market. I don't go there. We we have new schools in our ci- in our city. I have no kids that go to school anymore. I still pay the taxes, though, that it's okay. Because that's what makes this city what it is. That's what makes why people want to come here. And that's why we're growing. So I don't, that's my viewpoint, eye level. Fair enough. So I look at this project as I'm investing in an asset that the city owns for the next forty, fifty, sixty years, however long it it's going to survive until it needs another, a little more love. So that's where I'm coming from on it. I understand it's it's, we use taxpayers' money, but we use it for a lot of different things that not everybody uses. That's all my point is. Since I'm, I'm kind of a, I want to make money when I invest in things, I did a little bit of homework, if I can, real quickly. So on the driving range, for example, with the twenty-five spots, um, currently make a hundred and, what was it? Hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year revenue, as it is right now, with six grass and the whatever the the other keys. Uh, and if we can improve on it, great. So for me, a one point two five million dollar investment at a ten percent return is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we're over that number, a hundred and eighty thousand revenue. A ten percent return on my investment is a hundred and twenty-five. We're pretty happy with ten percent. That's good, right? Can't imagine somebody would turn down ten percent over the course of seven years, is what it would take to pay that off. Same with the merchandise, the pro shop. If you figure that eighteen hundred twenty-five square feet times four hundred bucks a square foot to build it, that's seven hundred thirty thousand. So that's a ten percent of seven thirty would be seventy-three thousand dollars, is what I would expect as a return. It's making, it's making.
Chris said the sales were a hundred and eleven.
So it's a ten year, it's a ten year return on that investment. And then anything past that is money. Okay, so then on the cart revenue, it's kind of the same thing. Um, the square footage, how big is a cart? I went up to my garage and measured mine. How much space do you need? Um, times the two hundred eighty square feet, times what it's going to produce, um, plus replacing golf carts, as Chris said, it's going to, it's a four hundred eighty-one thousand dollar investment at ten percent, that's forty-eight thousand. It's making ninety. That's a, that's a great investment. Okay, no, no, granted, you're not including staff and paying salaries and all sorts of stuff, but I'm looking at it, breaking it down into those micro boxes, so I can see, is it worth the investment? So I I hear, I want to see us stick to the eight point four as best we can. If we have to go over it a little, let's not start with that. Let's start with, we want the eight point four. And let's, I would ask our team, is there any way possible? Because in my mind, it's the the driving range is what's eating up all of our money. And if we can remodel or fix what's there currently, because it's making money, as it is right now today. And and if we can set ourselves up for success down the road, or maybe can extend whatever, but if we cannot go over one point two five on the range and we can have site work of one point six, soft costs of two point five, and a three million dollar budget for a new building, how it gets configured is, that's for other people to just figure it out and put the numbers to it. But that's a seventy-five hundred square foot building. So all I'm saying is that our next meeting next Tuesday, I would like to say, yes, eight point four, I would like to hear eight point four is enough. Here's what you get for it. And oh, if you want to extend the polls, we can do something down the road. It's going to be another five hundred grand, okay? I'd I'd rather, like we said earlier, start at our budget and and then it's, it's, then it, it becomes a uh, it becomes a, yep, we can afford that, or no, we don't, we can't afford it, maybe we can afford it, but we don't need it. Those are the easier decisions than how much are we going to spend, but we don't know what we're going to get for it. Is that a fair statement?
Uh, Councilmember Kurtz is next.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I um, I'd really appreciate it, I think, the discussion tonight. Um, I um, think we're realizing how expensive um, being in the golf business is for the city. Um, but we are today in the golf business, um, and so we have some decisions to make. And I think that the discussion that I'm hearing today, I think that um, financial stewardship for the citizens is weighing pretty heavily on all of us. I know I'm feeling it. Um, I think we all want to make a good decision. Um, and I'm hopeful that with kind of what we've talked about so far tonight, that there are some clear objectives um, for our next meeting. You know, I um, listening to Councilmember Cargill, when he puts it into, um, you know, the numbers that he did, I'm like my, like mind blown, I never thought to look at it that way, right? Um, and I listened to Councilmember Follier um, and what he just talked about with, you know, Orchard Park, I'm like, that's a really good point, too. Um, so I think we have a lot to consider um, in between now individually, um, and then as we have the meeting together next week. Um, I I'm hoping that um, that everybody comes back in with an open mind uh, because I think that we've all been um, in the different meetings that we've had, the different times that we've come together, um, solution focused and coming up with ideas, um, because it is a really important decision. But uh, I I I do feel the the fiscal responsibility um, definitely weighing on me. Um, I know it's a big decision. Um, and I just kind of want to encourage everybody to, you know, do some, do some good thinking, look at all the stuff again. Make sure that we come prepared um, for next week, because I I really do feel like we need to um, make a decision next week on on how to move forward. And um, I kind of liked what, as Phil was talking about, you know, start with the budget. Um, what can we get, what do we want? Um, you know, I can, I can get, I have twenty dollars and I can go down to McDonald's and get like, I don't know what you can get from McDonald's. I get, tonight I got for my kids, I got two Happy Meals and a meal for myself, twenty bucks. Now, I could go to Hey J's and get something different, right? So I think it, part of it is what we, we've really got to think about what it is we want and not just our perspective, but what the citizens want. So uh, I hope we can all do some um, some of our own research over the next week, but come back ready to, ready to engage with each other again and make a good decision.
Thanks, Councilmember Kurtz. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, has everybody else had an opportunity?
Uh, looks like it.
Okay, I have some questions carryover, where these questions have been asked before, I want to ask them again. I'm looking at what was given to us on January twenty-fifth, and for the driving range cost estimates, option one, it says site work, parking slash site scapes, ninety-four parking spaces was needed, but we have eighty-two now, so we're really looking at twelve more spaces. And it was one million two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, can somebody explain to us what is site scapes? Because I I can't believe one point two billion dollars for twelve more parking spaces. What is site scapes?
Uh, so I I can speak to that. Um, so that's putting in a hun- that's reconfiguring your entire parking lot. So that's not twelve spaces, that's a hundred and eighteen space, spaces. So it's, now, what we could do is we could leave the ninety-four that are, or that are currently there and not do anything to those, and then adjust our number to reflect the additional spaces only as they um, align with how that layout is. The site scapes portion of it is sidewalks, curb and gutter, stormwater retention, um, all the other elements that are necessary to be incorporated with the parking as it's put together. So it's really, if you think about it, it's the total scope outside of the footprint of your building. So what do you need to do to your site in order to bring it up to code for parking, for pedestrian access, for ADA, for stormwater runoff, uh, creating new slopes to align with those kinds of things. So so that's what's included in there.
Thank you for the explanation. Follow-up question. Uh, what you just said was, it's, that represents a hundred and some odd spaces?
Yeah, so that, so the need that, well, so we need, the currently, if we were to go with the option that um, Steve Roth talked about, we need a hundred and eighteen spaces. So um, the option that we considered previously was for a smaller building footprint with less occupants, so that was ninety-four. So that number moves based upon the size of the building and the number of occupants that will be included in that. So we can adjust the number down as, but I think the the bare minimum is that option one at ninety-four. I don't have it in front of me. Keith, maybe you can tell me what the the bare minimum parking is. But that is a, it's moved based upon occupancy load and size of building, so.
Well, my, uh, council, we have another question, please. Then that leads me to an option one, because that, why I'm talking about option one, because that's the eight point four, is ninety-four spaces. So let's assume that we're incorporating the eighty-two, we're not tearing up the whole parking lot and and to produce ninety-four spaces somewhere else. So it leads me to the question which has been asked numerous times, and I've only had one answer, and that is facing Safeway, that huge slope there, and also facing the Chevron Station. What is the cost of able to put in retainer walls and utilize that space? I'm willing to bet we could probably get twelve more spaces there, as an assumption. And that question.
That is a, that is a correct statement. We've done the exercise. We just completed uh, a very preliminary design this afternoon to try and make sure we could do that. So we have that information. Um, we're working towards getting pricing put on that, but we could incorporate those additional spots based upon the new layout. So that's a, that's a true statement, and we're exploring that right now.
Excellent, excellent. You you you've made me a happy camper. So I'm assuming for our next Tuesday's meeting, we're going to have something like that.
Yes, so I guess I would, I would comment, and I'm not going to take too much time on this, but a lot of our exercises have been built around a program that was provided to the design build team with a, with a series of assumptions on what the community wanted in their facility. And so that steered a lot of the directions around how we priced the multiple options. Our concern that started all this was, based upon the feedback that we received on restaurant size, flex space, community involvement, uh, designed by the, the original um, driving range um, designer, all drove us to wanting to make sure we priced what was originally provided to us. And that, what that, what the realization was, is that that was larger than the eight point four million dollar number. That being said, we can accommodate a project at eight point four million. However, we cannot incorporate all of the needs that were originally described. So wh- while I say that is, we can proceed with design based upon eight point four, you just won't receive all of the amenities that were originally described to us when we started this process. And so what we're really looking forward in several different times, what I've heard is, we need flex space. Well, how much flex space? But we don't want to spend more money than eight point four. We don't want to have quite the same size cart. Well, we can adjust that. We can scale all of these elements back to bring it to within the eight point four number. It just, at this point, has been a moving target on what is the actual value point for the individual elements that you would like to see within your facility. So next Tuesday, what I would encourage you to do is get feedback from risk management. Have them tell you what they are comfortable with coordinating you on the level of risk. Let us know what that is, and then we can define that immediately. I have a variety of pricing for a lot of different options. However, I have to rely on the expert, which is your clear risk, to tell us what's the acceptable solution. I can't provide that to you. They have to provide that to you, but I can provide you what the cost would be for that, those comments that they provide to you, if that makes sense. So we are ready and prepared to do that. Um, once those decisions have been kind of started to be made.
You can do one more follow-up, and then we.
Excellent, excellent. I I I do appreciate everything that you you said there. Uh, you're right, if anything, if anything, because we've had the inability to come up with what we really want, or what we think we can live with. We've sort of hamstrung you guys, and we, I apologize for that. But this is what happens back and forth. But when you, the statement is made is that this is what the citizens said they wanted, that is totally incorrect. We paid eighty-four thousand dollars to have a company out of Colorado to come up and give us some concepts. He said, well, we want to keep the restaurant, we want to keep the building, we want to keep the driving range, that's a sort of, what was presented was this huge conglomerate of things. And it was given to the citizens. And on, the citizens had a group on Monday, January twenty-sixth, on January twenty-seventh, and there were six meetings where groups of people were there. And not one, not one individual came up with really new ideas. What was put across is that, here's what we recommend. Because the recommendation was based on this, if you do kiddie golf, if you do all these, everything that was there, you would be the premier nine-hole golf course in the United States. And you would be able to set the example why other cities need to do what you're doing, to help kids learn how to play golf. We didn't want that. Okay, so that's where we are now. And the good thing is, I think we're, the funnel is getting smaller on what our focus is going to be. But you're absolutely right, and I apologize for my standpoint that we weren't more big, better prepared to give you the information you needed. Thank you.
Councilmember Cargill, and then we'll wrap this one up, because we're still have city business to do.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I I just wondered if next Tuesday you guys could also um, give us an idea, even if it's just a rough sketch of when you think some capital repairs might, might not, might need to uh, be put in place for a new building. Is it going to be twenty years? Is it going to be, and I know it's hard to guess that. Um, but to me, that's an important thing to know as well because if it is going to be fifteen or twenty years, when we're going to start having some enormous costs on this potential building, and we're start having some enormous costs on this potential building, and we're still in a twenty or thirty-year bond, that's going to give me more heartburn as well. So I'm just trying to get an idea of if if you, if you're guessing it's going to be twenty years or fifteen or thirty or maybe fifty. I don't, I don't know.
We have that information, and we'll present it at the next meeting. Um, we have some substantial um asset management projects that we need to do in that building if we do not, if we do not do this project.
So I think he was asking about the new one.
Yeah, I I'm, I mean, thank you, Lisa. I'm mainly talking about the new building. But you know, once we go to build it and it's done, you know, the first couple of years, hopefully we don't have anything. But then after a certain period of time, then you start, have to start making repairs and maintaining the facility. So I'm just trying to, trying to get a sense of when that will be.
Right, you can do that. Yep, absolutely.
All right, okay. Well, we we, it's almost twenty till. Um, hopefully we can wrap this up. I do see Councilmember Kurtz's hand. Is this something that can wait till next week? Councilmember Kurtz, or is it quick?
It's real quick. I just wanted to say, Lisa, I look forward to seeing that, because I think we need to have all the options on the table. So I look forward to seeing that information as well. Thank you.
Great. All right. So just, just a quick reminder, may not be worth anything whatsoever, but just kind of rewinding to the, to the uh the workshop that we did have um back, was it April of last year? I lose track of what what month it was and how we came up with eight point four million dollars, because honestly, there was really not a lot of science to it. When you look back on it, we took some payment amounts um based on um some debt load that we had had in the past. And we kind of worked forward into what what that might be now. And each council member threw out a project dollar amount that they were comfortable with, and we averaged them. We didn't have no idea what that would buy us at that time. And we were, it was actually quite a bit higher until one person kind of threw a low ball in, and I won't call him or her out, but but you know, just, just keep that in mind. You know, when we came up with with that eight point four million dollars, we didn't know what it would get us. So um and obviously, you know, that's what got put in the budget rightly so. Um, but just, you know, just want to make sure we got that history out there. Yeah, so um, all right, so we will move on um to general business.
Very good.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim, you're up.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda, item number one, motion to approve February first, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting minutes.
Second by Councilmember Cargill. Any discussion, comments? All right, those in favor of approving the February first, twenty twenty-two council minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero.
I apologize. Uh, in the past, we've always done the consent agenda, one and two at the same time, so I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm so jealous that you get to go. Why? See, that's why. Motion to uh, an item number two, motion to approve February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two vouchers and February payroll and benefits in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. Second.
Maybe a second by Councilmember Cargill. Any questions, comments? Not seeing or hearing any. All in favors, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero.
Very good. Action items be one, motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute parametrics task order twenty twenty-two dash zero one for on-call engineering service in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Go second from Councilmember Bear. Any ca- questions or comments? All right, around, I'm not hearing any. All in favor of approving action item one, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, not hearing any. Motion carries seven zero. Um, council comments? Anybody have anything more to add on something that we haven't already talked about? I'll qualify. Mayor Pro Tim.
I do. I'm announcing tonight that effective uh February twenty-eighth would be my last day as a council member for Liberty Lake.
What?
Yes, it is true. And usually when something like that is said, people go, oh, no. The other people go, oh, it's about time. So what you're going to be able to do is put yourself in one of those groups. The reason being is that uh I have said since day one, when I decided to run that my motivation is I want to be involved because of Trailhead. I was involved heavily before that, had been for the last four years, and here we're still dealing with with Trailhead. I've often said that the, my motivation is going to be as long as I had my health, that that would be the prior, primary thing. Well, that has changed in the last two years. If some of you remember back, I experienced two knee surgeries, hernia surgery, cancer, skin cancer, and all that type of stuff. And I'm proud to say during that time, I never missed a single meeting. I never missed a, a single meeting where if I was involved with GSI, STA, things of that sort there on it. But over the last several months, uh looking at things are going well, but still, when I concur with the heart doctor, pulmonary doctor, cancer doctor, says, you know, you're doing pretty good, but you're burning the candle pretty tight. So based on that and also based on uh Betty is experiencing uh some challenges with her health, a lot to do because of the commitment that I have put forward. Uh, my involvement with the city, I've never wanted to rank any other council member that they should do the time and effort that I put in. I do it because that's how I'm geared. I've always enjoyed doing that. I enjoy the involvement that I've had. So I'm looking forward to the new council members that are bringing in leadership that I'm excited to see and moving forward.
Wow.
Okay.
Quite surprised, Mike. You've been a huge asset. I know we don't always agree on everything, but we always come around.
That's why we're always a little ahead.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, and we always come around and obviously um from a personal standpoint, you know, I hope you stay involved to some point. Um, we do still have another opinion on the point.
Well, I've got, I've got one more meeting. So so somebody asked, let me get clear. Are you in the camp of, oh, no, or it's about time?
Oh, this is just, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna miss having the input, so.
The one thing, last thing I would like to say is this, is that the council has a responsibility. If I do share responsibility to fill the positions here. And what happens with elections in the United States and even here, we tend not to look at experience, we look at popularity. Don't fill this position with somebody who just has time. Look, what are they going to bring? If they can bring time, anybody can do that. But look at individuals who were involved in the city, who've been involved for a long period of time, have the accounting background, have the experience. Go out and ask them to come forward. Just don't sit here and keep asking for other divisions to come forward. I look around this room, and before election on it, I spent time with Jamie talking about running and the benefits itself. I spent time with you. Same with most of the individuals here, including yourself. Okay, I spent time before you ever admitted that you were going to run. Because what I went out and looked for was somebody who, one, was so friggin busy, they had no time to do anything else. In life, those are the people that get things done. So I am proud of what we've got here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, um, okay, so public hearings, unless there are other county council comments. No, one, 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 twice, three times. All right. Um, no public hearings, appeals, resolutions, resolution twenty-two dash two nine five. Kelsey?
Yes, resolution number twenty-two dash two ninety-five is a resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, supporting state emergency powers reform.
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. But we have to state the motion. I'm trying to go by the rules.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve uh resolution twenty-two dash two ninety-five.
Thank you. Second by Councilmember Baird. Okay, so we have a first and a second. I know this was talked about a little bit um at a previous meeting, but not in this format. Um, so I will go ahead and open the floor to comments, questions, just stay mindful of the time. Uh, we have less than fifteen minutes, so we can always extend. Go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
I'll just be real quick. Uh, we talked about this in the last meeting. Uh, there was again some concern about some of the language that was in there, so that was taken out. Um, and uh I hope that we can come together to approve this tonight.
Thank you. Looking for hands, paper hands.
For comments?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tim.
Some of my last were off. I appreciate you bringing this forward. Uh, I've always been an advocate of whatever council member wants to bring forward. It has a right to do so, because also the council has a right in the majority to say, no, we're not going to address that. On it, initially when that came forward, I was not supportive of that. There were certain recommend, things I recommended to change, and they were done. But I have to admit that there is one thing, and I do not have a copy in front of me, I wasn't able to find it in all my notes. Oh, very good. That, I am having a challenge moving forward with this, it's the verbiage. Okay. That the city councils of City Liberty Lake buy on record supporting immediate emergency powers, reform in a form form of of its hard community, several bipartisan state legislative proposals such as HB seventeen seventy-two and the others. The challenge is, we don't have those in our packet. I'm not totally familiar with those. And because of that, I'm not in favor of moving forward with my vote in that, because I don't know what those are. I don't think, excuse me, I don't have a good knowledge of that. Shame on me, but I guarantee you the public doesn't have. And just to arbitrarily say that I support these in my vote, and if I don't have an understanding, if I look at that and think it's somewhat partisan, I will not be in favor. So I just wanted to, I do appreciate the changes, though.
Right, thank you for your comment. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz is next.
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, that was one of, Mr. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy. Um, I had mentioned that, I think, when this first came up, that ha- not having the the actual language in in the packet was something that I thought we should have. Um, but I just have a couple of points on on why I'm not in favor of of this resolution. Um, we've seen a number of citizen comments, and um I just want to reflect that briefly. Um, and some of them have said that this is not a city issue. And I, and I agree with that. Um, we talked at the last meeting about not having or the potential that this is a partisan issue. Um, and bringing that forward again, it's even some of the language in there, I think um maybe off-putting to some people regarding um just a referendum on the governor, to be frank. I I did note in the February fifteenth meeting without belaboring the point um that I I do have concerns about a conflict of interest. I met with Councilmember Cargill. Um, we respectfully disagree on that point, and I'm I'm glad that we had that conversation. Um, but my concern still remains. And just reflecting back on the citizens who have come forward, given us citizen comments on this. Um, they share some of the same concerns that I've just outlined. Um, and so with their comments in mind, um, my vote on this matter is going to be a nay, um so that their voice is represented on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for hands. Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, um, I'm going to speak in opposition to the resolution. I always like to reflect on our city's comprehensive plan as the primary uh planning document in the delivery of ordinances, resolution, development codes. And I I did my best to try to identify any section of our comprehensive plan that speaks to this topic. I could not envision how uh one of the recitals of where a statement could reflect the actions of our comp plan. Um, I find this a little bit out of, out of context for the uh responsibilities and the obligations of our community. So, thanks.
Right, thank you. Any other comments, input? I don't know if we hit anybody else, Councilmember Foyer, Van Ormond, or Baird, before we start back around. Councilmember Baird?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, one of the reasons I am in support of this uh kind of goes along with what Councilmember Kurtz said is citizen comments. We have citizens commenting both for and against this resolution for various reasons, right? Um, one of the things that I appreciated about this resolution is it does reflect i- it does directly tie into the citizens of Liberty Lake, and I think there have been some citizens who, you know, would disagree with that is, is their right. But uh I also uh respect the dissent that other council members are bringing forward. And I think that there is uh certainly merit, right, to those opinions. Um, but I do want to go on record as saying that the reason that I will be supporting this resolution is to acknowledge the uh uh so many people in our city who elected us to be their voice, not just um in policies directly for Liberty Lake, but also to be their voice and for things beyond that scope. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Councilmembers Foyer or Van Ormond? Nothing?
No, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Cargill?
I was just going to say, the, the reason I'm supporting it, uh, I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. Reason I'm supporting it is because I I would like our local elected officials to have to have a seat at the table. And right now, they don't have a seat at the table. Um, which is why, that's part of the reason I brought this forward. I will just note, I appreciate what uh Mayor Pro Tim had to say about the, the different bills. Uh, one of the bills, fifty-nine oh nine, passed this afternoon, and it was predictably partisan. The, the vote split was in the legislature, it was twenty-nine twenty with the Democrats voting in favor and the Republicans voting against. And the reason for that is because, in this case, they don't think it goes far enough. So, I mean, both, all of these bills have different pluses and minuses to them, but uh one of them did pass the state senate this afternoon.
When is it scheduled to be heard in the House?
Good question. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, well, Rasha, you'll find out before me, though. Okay, all right, if there's no further questions, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Oh, yes. Oh, yes, right. Thank you. Um, yes, I forgot. So we do take citizen comments on resolutions and ordinances, so I'll go ahead and just put a quick shout out. If anybody in the audience would like to make a citizen comment on this topic, please um either if you're here, um raise your hand. We only have one left standing. Um, or if anybody in the audience wants to comment on this particular item, this resolution, please shoot a note to Todd Henderson in the chat, and we will have you make your comment. I don't think we're hearing any. Just want to give people just a moment. All right, not hearing any. We'll go ahead then. Now we'll call for the vote for those in favor um of approving resolution twenty-two dash two nine five. Please raise your hand and keep it up so I can keep a quick track here. Okay. Okay, where'd you go? Okay. All right, and, all right, those opposed, please raise your hand. All right. Okay, great. So we have, I got, I wrote them all down, but I didn't count them up. So we have three in favor. And one, two, three, four, I kept adding up. It's going to weigh in for opposed, so it uh that motion fails. All right, so I do know we have a citizen comment, um, and I think we can get, get all that in and adjourn, um unless we have more than one citizen comment. So um, Todd, do we only have the one? Okay. All right, Tim Olson. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I'm saddened by and respect the uh comments from Councilmember Kennedy's decision tonight. However, as a member of the city council, I hope we can have enough scrutiny on some of the issues that come up. We had a really good meeting tonight. We had lots of good progress made as far as Trailhead goes, and I hope we can continue that momentum in the future. As a community member that supports the Trailhead project, I want to make sure we do it on a correct basis, and we don't necessarily look at the eight point four million dollars, that was a kind of an erroneous number going forward as a base for us to make a decision from. I want to see this community move forward. I think that once we get this thing done, that a lot more community members will use it. And I'm hoping to see you guys have a good decision next week. I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thanks for sticking with us, Mr. Olson. And as always, your comments are appreciated. Okay, so make sure you don't miss anything, unless there's any other citizen comments, Todd. None? Okay, all right, so no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion second?
Second.
If I, if I'm hearing no objections. All right, I'm actually going to use the gavel tonight. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.